Good evening. It is seven o'clock on Tuesday, September 20th, 2022. And I call this meeting to order, but before I do, I just want to thank everybody who's here in the audience tonight. It almost feels like pre-pandemic city council meeting with people here. And those of you who are listening out there, please join us. You're welcome. And we're getting back to normal. Janet, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Councilmember Wolf?
Here.
Vice Mayor Tillman?
Here.
Mayor Cloven?
I am here as well. And with that, Janet, we'll move on to item number two, the medium protocol video. Will you roll that, please?
Tonight's meeting will be conducted both in person and remotely via Zoom. As a courtesy and technology permitting, members of the public may continue to provide live remote oral comment via the Zoom video conferencing platform. However, the city cannot guarantee that the public's access to teleconferencing technology will be uninterrupted, and technical difficulties may occur from time to time. This meeting is also being webcast on the City of Clayton's website. The mayor will call upon its council presenters, staff, and other speakers by name, and ask that they speak clearly and state their names before giving comments or remarks. Their mayor will call on members of the public that are attending in person first, and then shall call on members of the public that are participating via Zoom. Persons participating via webcast and Zoom with their cameras enabled are reminded that their activities are visible to viewers. Members of the public participating in person wishing to speak on an item may submit a speaker card with the city clerk. Members of the public participating by Zoom wishing to speak should use the raise hand feature or dial star nine, and the mayor will call upon them at the appropriate time. Telephone attendees will be called upon by the last four digits of their phone number. It is requested that public speakers state their name, but providing such information is voluntary. Written public comments received by the Clayton City Clerk by 5:00 p.m. today will be entered into the record but will not be read out loud. If authors of the written correspondence would like to speak, they are free to do so and should raise their hand, and the mayor will call upon them at the appropriate time. The chat feature is not active. In order to get the full Zoom experience, please make sure your application is up to date.
Thank you, Janet. With that, we close item number two. We move on to item number three, which is the pledge allegiance. Will you please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And with that, we move on to item number four, which is the consent calendar. And I will reach out to my fellow council members. Is there any item that you would desire to be pulled from the consent calendar? Yes, Vice Mayor Tillman?
Four D, please.
All right. Is there any other items that desire to have discussion?
Can we also pull E as well?
Yes, and four E can be pulled as well. Would you like to discuss the consent calendar gets addressed as is now, or just pull those separately, or would you like to discuss those items individually?
I just have a quick question on four D. I have no problem with it. I just want a clarification on the sign. So I'm happy to do it either way.
Because I could take a motion to move the consent calendar with D and E pulled as it is, and then talk this discussion separately?
Public comment.
All right, then we'll go move to public comment, and we'll pull D and E and have a conversation. Are there any public comment on the consent agenda as it is at this time in the public? Is there any in Zoom with this conversation?
Mayor Cloven, I don't have any in Zoom, but you did receive a speaker card from Ed Miller.
That is, I believe, regarding the Allied Waste Systems as item number E, so I will let that conversation go with that discussion on item E. Thank you, Janet.
Okay, so then I'll start with, oh, that's really, with four D. The only question that I had is on-
Actually, do we, at this point, do we move to have the consent calendar accepted as it is with D and E separate, E and D separately?
That would probably be easiest if you just get a motion a second, some voting on everything, and then we'll take D, and then we'll take E.
All right, so we'll take a motion for the consent calendar without D and E?
Move approval, Tillman.
Second.
Janet, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Councilmember Wolf?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tillman?
Aye.
Mayor Cloven?
Aye. And with that, consent agenda minus D and E is passed, and we'll move on to the first, it was item D, for discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a quick question. I guess this is for the city engineer. Can you, can we just discuss the sign? It's on page 27 in the PDF, and it reads, it's just a little confusing the way that it currently reads, and I know that there's already a sign there that reads the exact same way, but it's always been confusing since I had children in elementary school. So it currently reads school days 7 to 8:15 a.m., 12:05 to 12:50 p.m. Wednesday only, and then 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. So the way it currently reads, it looks, it looks like they can't make a U-turn Monday through Friday 2 to 3, and that they can't make U-turns 7 to 8:15 and 12:05 to 12:50 on Wednesdays only, as opposed to every day 7 to 8:15 and 2:00 to 3:00 p.m., with the exception of Wednesday, which has the earlier release.
No, I do think that's a fair point. I would suggest, I do believe the intention is that every day is 8 to 8:15, and that the afternoon or the noon time pickup on Wednesday and the afternoon pickup are different based off the days.
Right.
I would, I think it would be good to make an adjustment to the resolution. Under the fourth paragraph, or I'm sorry, both the fourth paragraph, whereas, and then the now, therefore be resolved, we add 8 to 8:15 a.m. on the Wednesday portion of the time to correctly identify that the morning is also included on Wednesday. And you prove the resolution as updated. And then we will make an adjustment in the sign to basically follow what we were just discussing, and then we should order an additional sign to correct the one that's out there-
Yes.
-at the same time.
Okay.
So that way it's consistent.
And this says seven.
Yeah.
And this says eight.
Yeah. So I think the other point would be per the resolution, it talks about 8:00 in the morning to 8:15, but the existing sign does talk about 7:00 to 8:15. The resolution states 8, which I believe is right near the start time of the elementary school. Unless there is a desire to have it for the hour before, I think it'd be best to probably just be 8 to 8:15. However, you know, if, we received this in coordination with the police department, so I don't know if the police department wanted to speak to that specific issue, but I imagine that the enforcement timeframe is like right at pickup. There's probably not a lot of issues at 7:00 in the morning, is my guess.
Probably not 7:00, but I don't know what the current elementary school times, start time is. So if anyone, perfect. Oh, there's a teacher and a police officer.
Thank you. Sergeant Shaw, Clayton Police Department. The crossing period does start to get busy prior to the time that school starts. So the reason that it's seven o'clock is for all the early people that come. So I think we need that, at least a 30-minute to 40-minute window prior to when the bell rings in order to keep it safe during that crossing period.
And do you know offhand what time school begins now?
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock.
So 7:30 would be a good-
So I would say 7:15 probably at least.
Okay.
If the bell rings at 8:00, I'd say 7:15 to 8:00.
Okay. So then maybe we leave it 7:00 then, or 7:15, if it's, if it will all fit, that works?
If you leave it at 7:00, you don't need to change the existing sign, except that the wording on the existing sign is also really weird. So I guess you have to change it anyways.
We will make all of the signs consistent.
So I would suggest, based off that information, that the resolution be updated under paragraphs four and seven, that it would now read Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Fridays, 7:00 a.m. to 8:15 a.m., and 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. And then on Wednesdays, add 7:00 a.m. to 8:15 a.m. and 12:05 to 12:50 p.m.
No.
Okay.
School's out at 12:55 on Wednesdays.
Okay.
So it should probably be then 12:15 to 1:15?
Yeah.
12:15 to 1:15. And then is school, what time is school out on the other school days?
Uh, 2:35.
2:35. So 2 to 3, okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, so does staff have enough direction then for us to go ahead and make a motion on this, or do we want to do both of them at the same time, or one at a time?
No, we'll do D first, but just to clarify, 7 to 8:15 mornings, 2 to 3:00 p.m. afternoons, except for Wednesday. Wednesday afternoons will be 12:15 to 1:15 p.m., and we'll coordinate all of the signs to be consistent and more clear than they are currently. That would be the revised motion, or the motion to move forward with a revised resolution, which we'll provide for the final package.
Okay, then I will make a motion to approve the revised amendment, I'm sorry, resolution that will show that Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, the signage will read 7 to 8:15 a.m. and, just wrote it. What was the afternoon time again? I've already forgotten myself. It's the same, that stays the same, 2 to 3:00 p.m. And on Wednesdays, it will read 12:15 to 1:15 p.m. And that will be changed in paragraphs four and seven.
I'll second that.
First by Vice Mayor Tillman, second by Councilmember Wong. Will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Councilmember Wolf?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tillman?
Yes.
Mayor Cloven?
Yes, and with that, item four D passes, and we'll move on to item number four E, and Councilmember Wong, you asked for it to be pulled.
Yeah, I'd just like to comment on this one. I know that over the years, we've had a number of citizens request various items through Republic Services and the service agreement that we have. I know the agreements-
Do you have a comment, or just going to comment as opposed to asking a question?
Sure. I'll pause.
With that, we'll move on. We do have a speaker card, item number four.
Thank you. I'll be rather quick, thank you. I'm Ed Miller, longtime resident of Clayton, and I'd like to present an idea regarding the city's contract with Republic Services for your consideration. Back in April 1993, the cities of Walnut Creek and San Ramon signed a joint powers agreement to form the Central Contra Costa Solid Waste Authority to manage facilities, personnel, and contractual agreements for the two cities as relates to garbage and recycling. Later in February 1996, membership in the JPA expanded to include Arinda, Maraga, Lafayette, and Danville. Today, the JPA operates under the rebranded name of Recycle Smart and serves those six cities as well as several unincorporated areas in the county. Residents currently enjoy an infrastructure with several services ours does not have, such as organic waste disposal, and we are mandated by law to implement by 2024. Recycle Smart last signed a 10-year agreement with Republic Services in 2015, and that's set to expire February 28, 2025. So that's coming up with an option to extend two years. I'd like to suggest that as Clayton itself reaches the end of its current 10-year agreement, that members of city staff and the city council reach out to Recycle Smart to explore the feasibility and possible advantages of joining this strategic regional partnership. It is my hope that in doing so, our city will benefit from the increased negotiation strength of the JPA, and residents might enjoy lower garbage rates and a wider array of services and amenities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, is there any other public comment out there, Janet?
Mayor Cloven, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
And seeing none raised in our audience, I will bring it back to discussion. And Councilmember Wong?
Yeah, I was, I was just saying, over the years, there's been a number of residents that have inquired about the level of service from Republic Services, and I would encourage, as we do the negotiation, that we look for levers that we may have within that agreement. I know that they offer a number of services that may not get as much utilization, and therefore a cost. And if we're able to modify that, and I know that there's been an idea about tiered service based on either volume or even age as well, other criteria depending on the residence. And so, to the extent that we have the ability to use those levers during the negotiation, I think that'd be worthwhile to look at.
Any other comments from council? I am familiar with our city manager's background in trash. She has some significant experience in solid waste in Sacramento and understands solid waste companies and the contracts with Republic, as well as what's happening with our fellow neighbors and what they pay. So I'm confident in her ability to have those conversations. I'm looking forward to seeing what she brings back to council for us to take a look at in those negotiations. And thank you for your comments. Jeff, is there anything you want regarding on this item to change, or should we just pass it as it is? What's your thoughts?
It sounds like just a, for, or an extension of our existing for six months with an option to extend at the mutual agreement. So that seems pretty fair.
With that, we'll need somebody to move on that item, please.
I'd move it.
I'll second. I'll second.
We have a first by Councilmember Wong, a second by Vice Mayor Tillman. Janet, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Councilmember Wolf?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tillman?
Aye.
Mayor Cloven?
Aye. And with that, it carries. Item number E passes. And we are now done with item number four. We get to move on to item number five, which is recognitions and presentations. And this is for information only, but a year ago, we recognized National Hispanic Heritage Month, which is September 15 through October 15. And we also recognize Constitution Day and Citizenship Day, which is September 17. Therefore, we do not need to recognize those again. But I just wanted to acknowledge there that that is an annual recognition. We'll do it every meeting accordingly. We'll move on to item number five B, which is a proclamation declaring September as Library Card Sign Up Month in the City of Clayton. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Vice Mayor Tillman, who is our library representative.
And my computer's stuck, so hold, please. Let me pull it up. Holy smokes. I have it, thank you. We had it in person, I would have grabbed it. Okay. Declaring September as Library Card Sign Up Month. Whereas libraries and librarians play a crucial role in the education and development of children, and whereas librarians and literacy experts offering everything from preschool storytime to summer reading programs that sustain school year learning, and whereas libraries, libraries provide a learning environment that fosters joyful exploration, encouraging students to research subjects that they are genuinely curious about, and whereas librarians create welcoming and inclusive spaces for people of all backgrounds to learn together and engage with one another, and whereas librarians provide, excuse me, a variety of books and resources to serve everyone in the community, making knowledge and ideas available so that people have the freedom to choose what to read, and whereas a library card empowers all people to pursue their dreams, explore their passions and interests, and find their voice, and whereas libraries are constantly transforming to deliver new services that connect closely with community needs, even during a pandemic. Now, therefore, I, I keep wanting to read your name because it's throwing me off. Holly Tillman, Vice Mayor, and on behalf of the entire Clayton City Council, proclaim September as Library Card Sign Up Month in Clayton, California, and encourage everyone to sign up for their own library card today. And thank you, Mayor. Oh. Hi, Geneva. We also have the librarian. Would you like to speak? Would you like to say anything?
Sorry, I've never used one of these. So I wanted to thank the city council for doing the proclamation and for helping promote and bring attention to the library services. Many people don't realize, you can check out ukuleles from the library these days. You can have streaming movies and shows. There's services to review resumes for people who are job searching, and we have electronic books. We have free reduced-cost museum passes and other event passes. So if some of this sounds like, wait, what, the library has more than books, please come in. For those of you in the room, it's just through the lobby to your left. And for those of you watching in Zoom, it is in the same building as Choir Hall, and readily accessible. And we really hope to see all of you in, if you don't have a card, or even if you do, to help show you around all our cool services. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yes, Councilmember Wong?
I take advantage of Overdrive. It's an app that you can download and do eBooks and audiobooks. It's very easy to connect your library card. It's free. It's amazing. If, and if you're a resident of California, you can get library cards from other libraries as well that offer it, not all, some. And some of them have different selections for their menus as well. So I recommend Overdrive. It's a great little app.
Awesome, thank you. And with that, we'll close item number five B. And we're going to move on to item numbers five C and D, which are significates of recognitions in our public schools for exemplifying our Do the Right Thing program. And we're going to talk about two character traits, and item C is inclusion, and item D is courage. And I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Wong, who has been our liaison with our principals, and let you take it as you desire.
Okay, I'll take it, Jeff. Never mind. You said Councilmember Wong. I just thought you were turning it off.
Mr. Wolf.
Okay, well, oh, we have people. Look at this. They're up on the screen already. Well, we have, inclusion was our May, June, and July of 2022 trait for Do the Right Thing, and courage was last month in August. And who do we have? Do we have Katie Sanchez with us right now? Let me see.
Councilmember Wolf, I'm trying to get everybody from Mount Diablo Unified School, or Mount Diablo Elementary School promoted. There is one student that I don't see on the list, so if they just want to raise their hand, I can promote them to panelist.
Okay. And do we have the, the middle school as well?
We do, but did we want to put them all up at one time?
No, I just wanted to know who might be here first. Oh, wait, I think I see Ms. Sanchez there. Hi, you look nice and comfy.
Well, sorry, it's the only place I can look in my phone. I actually have my teachers on today. So we have Shanna Pilon and Colleen Van Ootreev are both here to present their students.
Okay, well, let's start with Hayden Barry then, for inclusion. And who's the teacher for Hayden Barry?
Shanna Pilon.
Hello.
Hi there. Welcome.
I'm so pleased. Well, thank you. Hayden, I'm so glad to see you. I'm so pleased to give you this award. Hayden is just a fantastic student that cares for everyone. She's well-organized, and on top of all of her work. She is so quick to help others. She notices when others are struggling and helps to keep them in sync with our classroom. She has fantastic leadership skills. She's very selfless and quick to be of assistance to anyone who needs it and to help others feel included. I have paired her with students in our classroom that would benefit from her caring nature, and they are also thriving because of her teamwork. After nominating Hayden, I found out that her teacher last year had also nominated her. So I am so pleased to finally be able to give this award to Hayden. Thank you, Hayden, for being caring, kind, and inclusive.
Well, that says it all. We got to give her a round of applause. That's Hayden Barry. Hayden, what grade are you in, Hayden?
Okay, now say it.
First grade.
You're in first grade. Wow, that's fantastic. And you're getting an award in first grade? Imagine what you're going to do for the rest of your entire career in school. Going to get an award a year, that would be fantastic. Well, thank you so much, and we're going to make sure we have your signed certificate to you just as soon as possible. And it looks like you have, is that mom and who with you?
A brother.
And little brother. All right, terrific. Well, congratulations, and we really appreciate you being here. Thank you. And now, let's see, who else do we have? Thank you. And so we have, for courage, we have Gigi Lima. And who's Gigi Lima's teacher?
I am. I'm Mrs. Van Ootreev.
Hey, welcome back.
Thank you.
You seem to have a student every single time we do this. That's fantastic.
I don't like to make this publicly known, but I always get the best students.
Yes, you do. All right. Well, tell us about Gigi Lima.
Well, this is Gigi's first year at Mount Diablo Elementary School, and I nominated her for the Award of Courage because it takes courage to start at a new school. And it can be scary to go into a classroom in a school where you don't know anyone. But Gigi came, and she just fit right in. She smiled, and she made new friends. And it really takes courage to do something new. Gigi is someone that others can look up to as an example of how to be courageous, and she really deserves this award.
Well, thank you very much. She's, she's not on the screen there, but we do congratulate her, and I'm so glad she got to be in the best class in school.
With the best teacher.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sanchez, for bringing your students and your teachers today. Really appreciate it. We'll see you next time. All right, now we're going to go to our middle school, Diablo Valley Middle School, Diablo View Middle School. And do we have Mr. Fong with us?
There's a lot of them.
Yes, there are. This is a, this is a very unusual, this is an unusual situation today because we have five students, and there's Mr. Fong to tell us all about them. Hello, welcome, Mr. Fong.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
So today we have an unusual situation because the teachers got together and decided that all of your students, all five of these students that you have, should be awarded for both inclusion and courage. And I think that's probably the first time we've ever done this this way. So tell us about the students and why they deserve both of these awards.
All right. Well, for DVMS, we nominated the following students for being courageous and inclusive. So we have Sophie Strumpf, Eva Farat, Alexis Schmidt, Trinity Champathong, and Raymond Alatini. So-
And everybody loves Raymond.
Yeah, there you go. So when our staff met to talk about inclusion and courage, we felt as though at middle school, they're kind of synergistic traits. Middle school is tough. Many would argue it's the toughest portion of school, you know, it's the shortest amount of time at any one school because you do six years in elementary, four in high school. And it's compounded by major changes in kids' brains and body. You know, puberty is no joke. So adolescents are increasingly self-conscious about their place in the world as well as their place among- their place amongst their peers. And with this awareness comes lots of social anxieties around fitting in and being cool. So this makes being inclusive of everyone around you a challenge that has to be met with courage. It takes courage because you have to care more about making other people feel accepted and cared for than you care about what other people may think about you. So, and then on a side note, courage in middle school also takes a lot of different forms. It may look like the courage to stand up for others, or the courage to be different and to embrace it and be proud of it, or the courage to stand tall when others don't. Or it could just be the courage to do what's right, no matter what the situation. So every single student here representing DVMS displays these traits on a daily basis, and they're being recognized by their teachers and their peers. Quite a few of the teachers actually had the classes vote on who was the most inclusive in the classroom, and these were our winners. So I'm proud to have them as my students. I can't say enough about how much we appreciate their efforts towards making the school a better place. So once again, without further ado, I give you Sophie Strumpf, Eva Farat, Alexis Schmidt, Trinity Champathong, and Raymond Alatini.
All right, we're very proud to have them in Clayton, too. Thank you very much. Congratulations to each of you. Thank you so much. And thank you, Mr. Fong, for that great explanation as to why all of these students are the best of the best. We appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, Mayor, I think that is it. Turning it back over to you.
Thank you very much. That closes item number five C and D. And I love the energy associated with our Do the Right Program, and I love our principals for what they do and those traits which they instill in our children. It's awesome to see and inspire that. You know, I would like to change the order of our agenda, if you don't mind. This is something new. I've just given you a curveball. But I'm looking at our audience, and I'm seeing that several of the members in our audience are here for action number, item number nine A. Do you mind if we take that item and move it up now before report six? Can we do that?
At the pleasure of your council, yes.
Councilmembers, I just see so many people that are here, and some of them are younger. And I anticipate items numbers six, seven, and eight to be a little bit longer, and I'd like to address them.
You're saying that they wouldn't want to stay for our reports?
I'm guessing they probably appreciate what we do, but not that much. But that's kind of my thoughts. Does anybody have any objections to that?
No.
With no objections, then, if you don't mind, we're going to take out of order. We're going to move on to action number nine, action item number nine A. And this is an approved-by-minute order, the placement of plaques in the memory of Brayden Fahey at the Grove Park and the Clayton Community Park. And with that, I'm going to turn that over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and members of the audience. It's delightful to see so many people. This item before the council this evening is really in recognition of a great loss that the community suffered when Brayden Fahey passed away several weeks ago. And there are a number of requests that have come to the city for ways to honor Brayden in this, in the aftermath. Two of them are related directly to city, existing city facilities. One is to place a plaque on a bench at the Grove where Brayden and his friends often spent time, as long as the plaque is paid for by the requesters, which has been agreed to. We have identified with them the bench that it will go on, and so it doesn't actually take council action specifically to do that one. But the second request was made by Clayton Valley Little League for naming Field Three again in Brayden's honor. And that, according to the council's parks naming policy, does require council approval. Again, the plaque would be paid for by Clayton Valley Little League in this case as the requister of that acknowledgement. And so with that, I turn it back over to you, Mayor, and ultimately to the members of the community to move forward with this item.
Thank you very much for that. And with that, I open it to questions from the city council of our city manager on this particular item nine A. Are there any? Excellent. And with no questions from our city council, we get to open this up for public comment. And I know there are some of you out there who know the Fahey family and Brayden well, and this is your time to come up to the mic. And you've got three minutes to say what you'd like to say. Come on.
I'm speaking for all of us. You've got it. Hi, my name's Zach Torrey, former Clayton Valley Little League president. That's Chris Brannick, the current president. We just shifted over. Obviously, it goes without saying, Brayden was a huge part of all of our kids' lives. And the tragedy that the Faheys have experienced is something that we, as parents, all can't begin to fathom. Certainly, this dedication would be a wonderful thing for them, and it's, in my opinion, it's the least we can do. The city of Clayton would, or pardon me, the Clayton Valley Little League would like to put a, get a plaque designed and approved by you guys before we actually put it up so we make sure we're proper with whatever regulations we need to adhere to. But it would mean a lot to the Fahey family. I actually visited with the Fahey family a couple of weeks ago, which was really nice, trying to give them a little bit of normalcy in a very abnormal time. And they did mention how much this would mean to them. We've actually floated a couple of things with them. We're working with the San Francisco Giants and other things. So this really would mean a lot for them. It would be a place they could go to kind of remember Brayden and the good times. He played a lot of baseball up at the Clayton Community Park, Field Three. It was where we play our majors game, so it's a big deal for him, his 12-year-old year, that kind of thing. That's why we chose that field, is the field we requested. So I think everybody understands what we're trying to do here, so I won't waste, I won't spend any more time on it. But thank you very much for your consideration, and we'd love to partner with you on making this and doing it right. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. That's awesome. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this item, on behalf of this item? If not, are there questions, or people who'd like to speak on this item out there in the virtual land? Janet.
Mayor Cloven, I do not have any hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you, Janet. Appreciate that. I'll open it up for discussion, but I will personally say that I know the Fahey family from my time at Dane Hills Swim Team. I was shocked to hear it like everybody else in the community, and I can't imagine what it would be feel like. I was reached out to by two young men, Paul and Jacob, before the passing of Brayden. They used to play wiffle ball in the Grove every day, it seems like. I think their tracks are still there in the grass. They asked for wiffle ball court. In the passing of Brayden, conversations were had with our city staff, and there has been a field, a vacant lot basically, that's been, that is now available for a wiffle ball area right below the city hall and the city maintenance area that can be used for wiffle ball, and you can play in Brayden's honor all the time now. And I am excited to be able to honor them in whatever way we can. So thank you all for coming. Any other comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I concur with everything that the mayor just said. I, too, was also reached out by the Burgers to ask for the same wiffle ball field. So I'm glad we were able to make that come to fruition. But I would also like to ask staff if we can also make this slightly easier, instead of them having to come back to us with the parameters? Can we give those to them? Okay, good. I just want to make sure there was not a lot of back and forth so that this can just get done as quickly as possible. And I think we'd all be in agreement that, as Mr. Torrey said, it's the least that we can do as a community. And my condolences to all who knew him. I did attend the services. I did not know the family, but there are so many people's lives that he touched that I'm in contact with, and I went there for support. And I just want you guys to know that my hearts go out to all of you. And so if there's anything else that the city can do on his behalf, please come forward to us and let us know again. Thank you.
Any other discussion from council? If not, it would entertain a motion to approve the minute order of placement of plaques in the memory of Brayden and the Grove Park, as well as the Clayton Community Park at this time.
Move approval.
Second. First, by Councilmember Diaz, a second by Councilmember Wolf. And with that, Janet, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Diaz. Councilmember One.
Aye.
Councilmember Wolf.
Absolutely.
Vice Mayor Tillman.
Aye.
Mayor Cloven.
And with that, it's unanimous. Thank you all, and I'm looking forward to celebrating and remembering with you all. And with that, item number nine A is closed, and we go back to our regularly scheduled We're going to move back to item number six, which is reports. And we'll start off with item number six A, which are city manager staff report. And Rada, take it on, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And just very briefly, not a lot to report this evening, but I just want to acknowledge as we are fully into election season, in the past, the city has done sort of a separate space and time on the agenda for candidate comments. This time, it will be just part of public comment on matters not on the agenda. So any candidates wishing to speak can certainly put in their speaker's card. They will have their three minutes at the podium, similar to what has been done in the past. And we just ask, and this really is for Councilmember One, that all of them speak from the podium as candidates. So we maintain that as a separate portion from the rest of our agenda. And that is all I have this evening.
I have a question regarding that. I'd like to know the background of why that adjustment of history was made. Because it's going to amount to the same amount of time, I would guess. And the protocol has always been to have a separate agenda item on that. Thank you.
So it may have been the protocol here. It has not typically been the protocol in any of the other cities that I've worked in. And so my decision was that we would keep the structure of the agenda the same, and it allows the same, it affords the same opportunity for people to comment, and so the same amount of time.
So this was your decision?
Yes.
And actually, the conversation in public comment last meeting, when two candidates got up and spoke during public comment was appropriate, and they had their time. And it's a good time for candidates to speak their piece at that time. With that, item number six A is complete, and we'll move on to item number six B. And with that, Councilmember Diaz, would you like to have your report?
Just a few meetings I attended since our last council meeting. On the 19th of August was the return of the Oakhurst Country Club Car Show. Well over 50, 75 cars were there. It was amazing. On the 20th, a Saturday night, went to a very lively event for Sheriff Livingston. Many, many elected officials and appointed officials from throughout the county were there to recognize him. On the 21st, 24th, excuse me, attended the Controfesta Association of Realtors event. On the 25th, the CBCA meeting. The 27th, second to the last concert in the Grove with the Sun Kings. On the 26th, many of you may have known Richard Karns, a local resident and musician that played many years at the Clayton Club. There was a memorial for him on that day. On the 29th, two events that I attended. The first one, Contra Costa Fire, which I liaisoned to reopen Station Number Four in Walnut Creek. That one was closed due to a number of things, both financial and the COVID situation. But they did keep the, a portion of their bomb squad there, but they have now reopened that officially for most of the unincorporated area in that section of Walnut Creek. Then we had a ad hoc garbage committee meeting relative to some of the things related to trash and that. Then on the 30th, I attended a very special dinner, a representative, congressional representative from the state of Utah. Many of you may know who he is or what his background is, but Burgess Mayor, Burgess Owen. Burgess was an NFL player for many, many years. And he came out to Contra Costa to address a number of people, and it was a very open and great discussion. And Burgess was an excellent representative to come out to Contra Costa and speak to us. On the, we also had the final concert, and that was with the East Bay Mud. And I got to tell you, we have packed that park before, but it was absolutely overflowing. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, they raised nearly $4,300 in the kitty there. So it was a very well closed-out event season, and it was absolutely spectacular, a great show. And then finally had the latter part of the week, a couple of meetings with the city manager and the police chief. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Diaz. And with that, we'll move on to Vice Mayor Tillman.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move this closer. On August 17th, I co-moderated the Clayton Pride Town Hall, which was for us to get together and figure out ways that we can move forward in the future that not only reduce the time that staff has to work on things for us, but thinking of future dates that will work best for everyone, as well as how we want to be structured. On the 18th, I attended the 2022 East Bay Leadership Council Installation Awards, which was nice to be able to see other groups within our county who were recognized for all of that they've done through their different works with different organizations. And I was able to see quite a few of our elected officials there as well. On the 25th, I was invited to be a guest speaker for the Mount Diablo Unified, Mount Diablo Unified School District. I'm the liaison for that group between us and the city council, and I received a Spirit of Excellence Award from the African-American Parent Advisory Council, as well as the school district. On the 29th, along with Councilmember Diaz, I participated in the Garbage and Recycling Ad Hoc Committee meeting. And as he said, we've already discussed what we're going to do with that. On the 31st, I attended Brayden Fahey's memorial service at St. Bonaventure Church. And as I was alluding to those that were in the audience, he has touched a lot of lives in this community. And I'm glad that we were able to do the plaques and naming of the field for him. On the 1st, I attended the mayor's conference and listened to a discussion from Phillips 66 regarding their conversion of the Rodeo Refinery. That was actually a pretty brief meeting, so thank you, Mayor, for letting me go on your stead. On the 7th through the 9th, I flew down to Long Beach to attend the League of California Cities Conference, along with Mayor Cloven. And we partnered up and figured out which meetings we would attend separately and some of them concurrently together. I attended the ones that featured SB 1383 regarding the garbage and recycling, ideas from other localities around California regarding ARPA and what to do with those funds, as well as cannabis and different, what's worked and what hasn't worked from not only just places here in our county, but throughout California. They had a lot of good ideas and some, a lot of good tips on things not to do. On 9/11, I attended the 9/11 Memorial Ceremony at Station 11 that Councilmember Wolf, as well as VFW, is it 75? I did not, no, seven, no. No, what is it, Mayor? VFW?
VFW Post.
Okay, local post. And it was a very moving ceremony that a lot of us did attend. In fact, some of the commissioners were there as well. And it was nice to be able to just commemorate that. I don't know if any of you guys have gone down and seen the flags that are placed down each year, but we did hear from the deputy chief, and he said that it seems like apathy is setting in, and a lot of people don't seem to act like we did back then. And he really implored all of us that were in attendance to remember that, and remember that we all came together as one community, and to continue to do that going forward and treat each other kindly and with respect, et cetera. On the 13th, I attended the Clayton Community Library Foundation Board Meeting. I I have a couple of reminders for that group. So you have probably seen, and I mentioned it before, they're having a book sale that is going to be October twenty-eighth through the thirtieth. So you'll see out in the foyer, there are some green flyers that speak to that and all of the dates and what happens. Most books are a dollar, most children's books are fifty cents. So feel free to attend that either of those days. And they also shared that they are going to be hosting, co-hosting. You'll see this flyer as well. They have with, along with the AAUW and the Clayton Community Library Foundation, they're having a presentation on October tenth here in Hoyer Hall. They're going to be discussing the pros and cons of the different ballot measures, as well as have a Q and A session with our Clayton City Council candidates. So that'll be here at seven PM on the tenth. This is also in the foyer. And then on the seventeenth, I was invited to the AAUW luncheon at La Veranda. And for those who don't know, that's the American Association of University Women. We have a local chapter here. There's also one in Concord. But they do a lot of great things for our community. There are only thirty-three members, so they're trying to recruit more. And TechTrek is the biggest thing in our area, at least in our local schools that they're known for. And so for anyone who's not familiar with that, they send seventh-grade students, so it's girls. So they send them to Sonoma State University, and it's for, to encourage girls to go into STEM. So science, technology, engineering, and math. And my daughter was one of the recipients of that when she was in Dean's seventh grade before her eighth grade year. And we got to hear from one of the students who did attend. They choose three students. They have to interview with the AAUW group, and it's the math and science teachers who actually recommend those students to the panelists, and they whittle it down to three and send them. So it's a great group if you have any daughters who are into science and technology and math, and they are going through the middle school. I encourage you to have them inquire about that. I also met with our city manager several times, as well as the mayor, and I will turn it back over to you because I've been speaking for a really long time.
It's been a long time since we last met. Councilmember Juan, your report.
Yes, I, it has been quite some time. I fielded a lot of phone calls and emails. Specifically, I think we all spoke or we got communication regarding some issues over Diamond Terrace. And I continue to have discussion regarding some of the pavement work in and around town. Obviously, I'm up for reelection this year, so I'm campaigning, and I'm enjoying talking with a number of our residents about the issues and challenges that we face as a city. I've done interviews both with the Diablo Gazette and with the Pioneer, and I encourage folks to find out more information. And rather than give a whole campaign speech, I'll just say if you're interested, please feel free to visit my website, jeffwanforclaytoncouncil.net. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your report, and with that, we'll move to Councilmember Wolf.
Okay, good. Thank you. Let's see, I attended the East Contra Costa Habitat Conservancy meeting. Also, several meetings with the CBCA, CBCA Board, and the Hay Day Committee. We're having the Hay Day and trunk-or-treat again on October thirtieth here in Clayton at the Clayton Community Church Lot downtown from two to four PM. And that's a free event, and it's going to be all about the community, and costumes are encouraged. There'll be candy and games and fun for everybody, food trucks who are going to be there. I had, met with our city manager and with our city attorney. Of course, I met with our mayor. Had several emails and calls and social media, and I had one interesting exchange, which I'll discuss later on when we get to the end of the meeting. And on the, on nine eleven, I was able to put together with the VFW and the Fire Department and our Police Department, the nine eleven memorial. And we had it at, as Holly said, at the fire station with all the flags. And I also want to thank our city manager and Jim Warburton for getting the fountain on right on time. It came on right during the ceremony. It was perfect. And so that was a great day, and I'm glad that a lot of the citizens turned out for that as well. And let me see, one other thing about October tenth that Holly didn't mention, and that is not only will you be able to attend the October tenth League of Women Voters Forum here in Hoyer Hall, but if you can't make it, it will be on Zoom. And so you'll be able to get it and watch it from home if you'd like, and that's going to be a very important day, talking about the ballot measures. And of course, our city council candidates get a chance to talk and answer questions. And let me see if there's anything else real quick here. I think that is all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wolf. And I want to say that, first of all, acknowledge Denny Hill Swim Team. Again, for the second year in a row, they won county. They had never won county before last year, and now they're getting into a roll. So we have a heck of a good swim team on, right here in Clayton. And I was, I was remiss in not mentioning that last time at our last meeting. So congratulations to those coaches, those parents, and of course, our kids. I agree with Councilmember Diaz, our concert series rocked this year. And our last two concerts, the Sun Kings, which is a Beatles tribute band, and then East Bay Mud in their horn section, were out of control. Both concerts, we collected from donations over four, forty-two hundred dollars and forty-three hundred dollars on both of them. I put over seventeen thousand steps. My watch just dancing through the crowds. It was a blast. And I want to commend former Councilmember and Mayor Howard Geller for his efforts as promoter. Councilmember Diaz, his efforts for setup and take-down on those crews. And then former Mayor and Councilmember Chulie Piers for all of her efforts in promotions. These are tireless workers in our community who put that on, and I just want to appreciate you. Thank you. On the thirty-first, I also attended the memorial service at St. Bonaventure's for the Fahey family. And to see the love that was poured out and that completely packed church was impressive. Again, just to just understand how many people that family touched and still touches. It was awesome. The League of California Cities, or CalCities, is, was the seventh through the tenth. I cannot imagine not being a part of that group. The value which we received as a new council member attending for the first time. I was floored by the amount of information that existed and the amount of forums and different groups you can go to to learn on different topics. I was floored by the camaraderie of being with fellow councilmembers, not only locally in the East Bay, who we know, we've met through Zoom, but people I met from all over California who all have the same problems that we have as councilmembers. Same problem as a city that we have, dealing with housing mandates and unfended mandates in general from the state. It was impressive to be able to commiserate with them and figure out how they're dealing with it and how we can bring those things back to Clayton. Vice Mayor Tillman's correct, we met, and we separated, and we conquered. And got a chance to figure out what was important. Things that were important to me and that I thought I could bring back to Clayton was the idea of a climate action plan. I brought that forward. I actually went and listened to a presentation put on by our former interim city manager, Fram Robastelli, who is now the city manager at San Leandro. And she actually did the presentation on climate action plan and what it's doing for the city of San Leandro. I did have, go to a presentation on EV infrastructure and getting charging stations here in Clayton and how that, we get those funded. One of the more interesting presentations I went to was on fixing Prop forty-seven. And for those who don't know what that is, that's the ones where we wouldn't prosecute crimes under a thousand dollars and what that has done to us as a society and how it has made our citizens afraid, living in fear, because they're not, they're saying no crime has gone up, but that's only because it's not being reported anymore. We have challenges, and there is a group of citizens, councilmembers, and also retailers who are trying to figure out what to do next with that. And then the other thing I thought was very interesting was dealing with something else that's near and dear to our heart, the Surplus Land Act, and how that impacts lands we have here in Clayton. Again, very valuable. One of the things that happened last day was talking about things we got to chance to vote on. The first thing was pretty rote, which was a modification to the Constitution. Really didn't have a lot of value, which is, it was kind of, it was perfunctory. But what happened next was something that was very interesting. When we got there, there was a group called One Neighborhood Voice that was lobbying clearly for local control and petitioning for local control. And they were able to bring to the floor, because they got enough signatures and item to force the league to more clearly define their local control advocacy. And basically, it went to a vote the night before, and the recommendation was to send it to council. They were able to bring it to vote, actually, on the floor, and I wanted to hear the debate. So I voted yes to hear the debate. That debate was squelched, and it did not happen that day. It was overwhelming. It was like sixty, sixty-six percent or sixty-seven percent actually to not hear the debate. And it went, it's going to committee for additional discussion. But it was interesting, again, to sit with other mayors and talk about these issues about local control and what it means. The memorial on nine eleven was poignant and short, but poignant, bright and early at eight o'clock in the morning. You know, nine eleven is called Patriot's Day, and there's a good reason for that. A lot of people signed up to serve afterwards. It's also called Remembrance Day, and there's a good reason for that because there's so many fire engines that went in while people were running out and people who perished that day. But it's also being called Service Day. And one of the things I'm proposing is we already have a day in April where we do Clayton Cleans Up prior to the Art and Wine Festival. And it's been something we've done on Earth Day for a long time, and we'll do it again. I think it's April twenty-second of twenty twenty-three. But I'm proposing the city sponsor a Service Day, the weekend closest to nine eleven, where we get our community involved in doing service in Clayton, whether it be cleanup or actually working at a school or something along those lines where you get individual groups to actually do service that day as we prepare for Oktoberfest in September. And I think that would be of some value to us as we give back to our community. There's a lot of things that happened. It's been five weeks since we last meet, last met. But that's the end of my report right now. Thank you very much. And with that, we're going to close item number six B, and we're going to move on to item number seven. And item number seven is public comment on things that are not on the agenda. And as I say every meeting, this is a time for you to speak. You have three minutes. And please watch your time. You'll see the timer in front of you. And I will caution you when you're getting close. Please wrap it up. And please wrap it up at three minutes, because if you look like you could continue talking for longer than that, then I'll have the opportunity to turn your mic off. And I'd rather just have you just have your three minutes to be cognizant of your time. This is also going to be a time in the future of meetings for candidates to stand up and tell us who you are and what you want and what your vision is for Clayton and why you should be elected. I suspect the next four meetings before the election time, we're going to have lots of that. So with that, I do have two cards. I remind you, though, please be kind, be respectful. All five of us here, we're doing the best we can. We may have different opinions, but we want what's best for Clayton in our own ways. And this is, just address us as one body and not call us out individually. And with that, Kim Trupiano, you get the first up, so welcome.
Green one.
That's the red one.
No, nobody told me I needed a parka. It's freezing in here. Oh, my God. Hello, well, Mayor Clovin, Vice Mayor Tillman, and Councilmembers Diaz, Wolf, and Juan. Thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Kim Trupiano, and I'm running for Clayton City Council. My husband Rich and I moved to Clayton in 2013, and we have happily resided right over here in Sheperd Springs, just next door to the library. We're here because, as we all know, Clayton was and is a safe, charming community with great schools and lots of friendly people. I'm running for Clayton City Council because I'm deeply concerned about what has transpired in our community over the last several years. We are having trouble communicating with one another on some of the simplest, yet most pressing issues facing our community. And so over the next several weeks, I'm going to ask you to tune into my website and my social media pages for a series of weekly roundups, where each week I will be addressing a series of topics, including deficit spending, landscaping and maintenance, public safety, housing and staffing, with my recommended solutions. It's too easy to find fault with one another and the problems facing this community. But it takes real leadership to do the hard work, to listen to the community, engage with the community, and create common solutions that will work for Clayton today and in the future. Many in this community feel like they have not been heard or acknowledged. That's what I'm hearing out on the street. And I want everyone to know that I hear you, and I will continue to hear you and to fight for what's right to get us back on track for the sake of this incredible city. You can visit my website at kimforclayton.com or email me at anytime@kimforclayton@gmail. And I want to say on that note, Mayor Clovin, and I look forward to our meeting on Thursday, that I too look forward to a fun and positive and challenging campaign between now and November eighth. And I'm honored to be running. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Appreciate that. And with that, the next speaker card is Ed Miller.
Hi, I'm Ed Miller, and I'm a motivational speaker. I'm Ed Miller, and I'd like to say that after working for our community for a while now on the Planning Commission and also as a representative on the Contra Costa Transportation Authority Citizens Advisory Committee, I've decided to put everything that I've learned during my public service, all of that experience, to work for Clayton as I seek a seat this November on the city council. Our city is wrestling with a few challenges at the moment, the budget, housing, maintenance, to name a few. There are some very different approaches to solving these problems, and there are a lot of passionate voices in the community advocating for one solution over another. That's why it's so crucial that we elect someone that not only brings great ideas of their own, but who's also proven that they can listen to all sides of a discussion, treat everyone fairly, and let the best ideas win, no matter whose they are. That's exactly what I've done on the Planning Commission, because that's who I am all the time. Experienced, fair, and independent. I look forward to hearing ideas to meet our challenges from other members of the community, and I hope to earn your trust and your vote in the weeks ahead. You can email me at ed@trustedforclayton.com or visit my website, trustedfor, the number four, clayton.com. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ed. Is there any other here in the public that would like to speak? I don't have any other speaker cards. Yes, by all means, come on up and introduce yourself. Greetings. Welcome.
Okay, I'm not running for anything. I have a, I have a concern. I live at Twenty-Six Regency Drive in Clayton. I've lived there for thirty years. I retired four years ago and just noticed the, you know, you're around the house more. You see cars come up and down the street, and they go fast. You know, we get a lot of people, even though it's a dead-end street, it dead-ends to the mountain. So all the people that want to hike, they go running up the street. They come down the street. Could be some of the homeowners. I don't know. All I know is that my intersection of Regency and Weatherly, you know, that's where they come down the hill fast. And then when they're coming from Marsh Creek Road, it's two blocks before you hit my house, and they're gaining speed so they can get up the hill. Not too many people do twenty-five miles an hour. There's no police presence there, you know, whether staffed or unstaffed car. I've, I've talked to the police car. They come down. They come for the people that are parking illegally up there, and they do that job well. They go in to the people that, it's not really a hazard that they're parked illegally, but those cars coming up and down. but those cars coming up and down the street speeding, that could be immediate hazard. And it doesn't seem to be, doesn't seem to be the concern there that I think there needs to be. You know, I, we need a stop sign at Regency and Weatherly. Yeah, I just don't see the, you know, concern with the police or the city on this matter. You know, I've, I've talked with the police, like I say, a couple times. So just please consider a stop sign there before it's too late. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do that right?
You did it fine, fine. One more time, it's the red light's still on the mic. There you go. Well done. Fortunately, you do have a police officer listening, and you have the city staff listening. So thank you very much for your comments. Are there any other comments here within the room? If not, I will turn it over. Ah, I do. Thank you. I missed your hand, sorry.
There you go. Okay, my name is Bill Burmeister, one-four-four Widmore Place up off of Mitchell Canyon Road in Clayton. And I've just been getting a lot of emails lately from my neighbors saying that there's a, a meeting to approve the reclamation plan for the quarry coming up.
So Bill, I don't want to, I'm not being rude. That's actually actually on the agenda tonight.
Oh, is it?
And it's going to be specifically related to that. And at that time, you'd be, it's a perfect time for you to bring your comments.
I didn't see it on there, so.
It's going to be item number, I believe, nine D.
Okay, good. I'll wait for that.
Yeah, nine D. And I would love for you to talk about that at that time. So thank you. Appreciate it. Did you have something else to roll quick? City manager, do you want to address that, please?
So the city manager, on behalf of city staff, will go back and discuss it with staff, both police and engineering, on the potential for a stop sign and do some follow-up to just see what we potentially can do and what the situation is. So. It's a great question. It, we're a small, a small staff, so I don't know that there will be a decision right away. But if you can fill out a speaker card with your contact information, then we'll know to get back in touch with you. Okay. There's on the table behind you, there should be a blue card or a blue piece of paper that you can just fill out with whatever your best contact information is.
Are there any other public comments in the audience? If not, then I will turn it over to Janet. Is there, are there any hands raised in our Zoom audience?
Mayor Clovin, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
With that, we will close public comments, which is item number seven. And we're going to move on to item number eight, which is our public hearings. And typically, I would say there are none, but there is one for the first time. Yes, councilor, yes?
I have a question. We, I believe we have another candidate. Is he choosing not to speak tonight?
I offered my comments during my council report, and I'm not going to, I don't feel the need to repeat them, but I encourage people to go to my website. Thank you.
Excellent. We'll go to item number eight, which is public hearings. And we have a public hearing tonight on the proposed Community Facilities District Number Two Thousand Twenty-Two dash oh-one, Public Services, and we're to approve a resolution for a formation resolution calling election, resolution declaring results of election, and the first reading of the ordinance. And do I open the public hearing at this point? Or I return it over to the city engineer? There we go. Larry, it's all yours.
I'll start with a brief overview, and then, yes, we do have a pretty formal process tonight. So thank you to the council. This is an item that was initially brought before the council to start this process at its last meeting. Tonight, we are conducting a public hearing. So I would encourage the mayor to, there's a follow, there is a script relative to opening the public hearing, taking any public comments, then closing the public hearing, and then adopting a resolution to then establish the Community Facility District that's before us tonight, and then adopt another resolution calling for a special landowner election, and then conduct the special landowner election, which will have ballots that are opened by the city clerk. And then we will determine if the property owners in the district that are being assessed for this CFD at this time have approved the, the, the additional assessment. Following that, adopt a resolution declaring the results of the election, and then introduce an ordinance authorizing the levy of these special taxes. Following that, later this month, the city clerk will file a notice of special tax lien with the county. That will start the process in order to get on the tax roll. And then there will be, and its next council meeting on October fourth will be the second reading of the ordinance levying the special tax. And then assuming it does pass again, then the ordinance will be publicized within fifteen days of its passage. That concludes my overall report. I would encourage you to open the public hearing at this time.
Thank you. I appreciate your report. And with that, I do have a script for a public hearing. So today's hearing date is September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two. This is for the formation proceedings and elections for Community Facilities District Two Thousand Twenty-Two dash oh-one, Public Services of the City of Clayton. The public hearing is to consider the formation proceedings and elections for the Community Facilities District Number Two Thousand Twenty-Two, Two Thousand Twenty-One. The public hearing is now open, and the time is eight seventeen. Are there any disclosures from council members? This is related to conflicts of interest or attendance at other meetings, planning missions, or others? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, do you have proof of a publication that the notices are, as required by law, have been given, and do we have a complete file of documents?
Yes, we do.
Are there any written communications on this matter?
I have not received any written communications on this matter.
Do any council members wish to hear the staff report?
I just have questions, so I'll wait for that.
Okay. Then we will now receive comment from any persons in the audience. If you wish to speak on this matter, you can submit your speaker slip to the city clerk, basically opening up a public comment.
Mayor Clovin, I do not have any speaker cards on this item, and at this time, I don't have, do not have any hands raised on Zoom regarding this item.
Thank you, Janet. Would the city staff like to make any further comments?
I know, I believe we've addressed everything at this time.
At this point, do any members of the council have any questions for staff or make to wish any comments before I close the public hearing? Council member one.
Do you have access to the actual PDF right now?
I currently have the exhibit A.
I don't know which exhibit I'm referring to. I'm referring to page sixty-six of the two hundred and eighty-eight page agenda packet, so I don't know if that's. It's not labeled as specific attachment, so.
Two hundred, what was page?
It's page sixty-six.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. So I was hoping that you could add some clarity around this because I zoomed in really tight, and my eyes are just okay. When I look at the legend, I see this dotted line. Is this dotted line suggesting that the entire city of Clayton is a future annexation area boundary of the CFD?
Yes, it is.
Can you explain the ramifications of that? Because that seems odd for a CFD that's, you could correct my ignorance, CFD that's really targeted for an HOA for the specific development of Diablo Meadows. However, we're saying that there's a potential future annexation of the entire city into this?
So currently, the area that is being added and part of the special tax is the area around the Diablo Meadows development, which is.
Those two parts, those two parcels right now that will be subdivided into many parcels?
Correct. I believe it's going to be eighteen single-family homes in the end. That area is the area in question that's being taken for a vote tonight that the property owner has submitted ballots. However, this is a overall Community Facilities District that's being established that this initial development, the Diablo Meadows, is going to be the first one in. There is the potential for future subdivisions that have a similar, you know, situation where they may need to pay into for the city streetlight district or stormwater facilities, those were the two identified in Diablo Meadows, that they can then be just annexed in instead of having to set up a new district. So the, the opportunity is that anything developed within the current city limits could be simply annexed in as opposed to setting up a separate district.
But it would still require council action. So it's not as if anything is going to proceed that wouldn't be a formal annexation into the district by the council and then a subsequent similar process for establishing any tax districts. This just sets up that any new development in the city that potentially gets developed and needs to establish a CFD can annex into this new one rather than creating a proliferation of, of very small CFDs.
Can you speak to the advantage of that rather than creating CFDs specific to developments as we've done historically?
Well, you know, my history in Clayton is relatively brief, but not every subdivision is creating a whole new CFD each time. You know, there has been ones that have been set up, but also the ones that annex in, such as the streetlight district or other types of districts as well. This provides an opportunity to set up a CFD that is relatively current in terms of the current laws and, and how it's set up today versus older districts that are probably subject to older, older laws like Prop two eighteen.
Okay. So the existing CFD that covers streetlights, as an example, it applies, I think, to the entire overlay of the city? Or is it specific areas? I think it's, it may be the overlay of all the public, the city own lights at least.
It's almost all of the city. It is essentially a neighborhood streetlight district, so there are a few areas that are not included because they're not considered neighborhood streetlights. The challenge with the streetlight district and any new, we essentially cannot annex in new districts to that streetlight district because it would trigger a complete reevaluation under Prop two eighteen, and we would have to take the whole district to a vote. So we will not be bringing individual annexations to a streetlight district. So we have to do something, and rather than create, it's a slightly streamlined process to have a single district which developments can annex into as opposed to creating district after district. It didn't used to be that, we used to be able to annex into the streetlight district, but as the laws have changed, we, we can't do it any longer, and we would risk our existing streetlight assessment, small as it is, if we were to try to do just a simple, oh, let's just annex a new development to it, that would put that at risk.
Go ahead. The other thing I'd add is it's not just the streetlights. There's stormwater facilities that are relatively new concept that have been, are required by the Regional Water Quality Control Board. In this particular case, the Diablo Meadows development has an HOA that will maintain the stormwater facilities. There's two basins that essentially clean the water, the runoff from the development. However, by law or by our required permit that the city has with the regional board, we are required to basically ensure that they don't go belly up or essentially not fulfill their obligation to maintain that basin. So in this district, it allows for the city to implement an assessment up to a certain number. I don't have the exact number in my head right now, but if the HOA does not fulfill its requirements to complete its stormwater duties and making sure those basins are maintained and operating. So there are two major components for the development in this district. Those are the, the elements that are before you tonight.
So if there's a, if there's a parcel in town that is subject to the existing streetlight, I'm just using this as an example, but I guess it applies to the other as well. If there's an existing parcel that's subject to the current streetlight district, does this potential future annexation provide for the potential to have a, this CFD overlay on top and have them subject to two CFDs simultaneously?
Essentially, yes. There could be, if the council desired and we went through the whole process and there, you wanted to create essentially an overlay for a citywide streetlight assessment outside of the existing district. This would provide the sort of the underlying legal infrastructure to do that, but you would still have to go through the same process that you would for any other CFD in terms of setting a tax rate and a tax assessment area. So all of that would still have to play out the same way regardless of whether it sat on top of this infrastructure or it sat on top of its own infrastructure.
I would say specifically for this development, the intention is that the developer was required in its conditions of approval to annex into, originally into the city's streetlight district. But given the, the, some of the complexities that were already discussed tonight, it was, it was determined, and for the developer, it's basically the same, same rate. It's just going into a different district as opposed to the original streetlight district. So essentially, the thought is instead of being in the original streetlight district, we're now establishing probably going forward a district that will cover the streetlight needs or the, you know, their portion of requirements for the city in this new CFD.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's, I think it's a, a good approach to having the developments cover the costs associated with it, so streetlights, stormwater, all the associated maintenance. I, I have concerns over the potential to, to, you know, the future annexation area boundary that essentially covers the entire city for that. I'm not sure, I think what it sounds like, and you could tell me if I'm wrong, is that the, the benefit derived from doing that is all in the future and its potential. Like, there's no immediate return on that. It just, it could potentially make some of the administrative burden easier on a go-forward basis should we ever choose to do that. Is that?
Correct.
Fair?
Yes.
Okay. Can we not do that?
Well, if you adjust the, the area of the district now, then I don't believe you can adjust the overall district limits in a future date. You would probably need to establish a separate district.
Yeah, I mean, like, I know that the Diablo Yeah, I mean, like, I know that the Diablo Meadows project has a timeline, and so, in keeping with their timeline and where they want to be, this is a requirement essentially that has to get done. Could we move forward without annexing or having a future annexation area boundary of the entire city?
Mala is helping us evaluate whether the council could make that change.
Because I know there's a lot of protocol. There's a lot of protocol associated with this, so I don't know what the rules are.
She's going to go make a call. We do have a timeline that we need to keep on for this district, and so, we will determine whether there could be a change essentially right into the record that changed the future annexation area. If not, we would respectfully request that the council move forward with the identification of the future annexation area as well so that we can meet the sort of procedural timeline for the district establishment.
We do have Brian Brown from Francisco and Associates, who's been our specialist in formulating this special district. If you'd like to have him added via Zoom, he might be able to address some of the more technical questions if you'd like.
If that would provide more clarity.
Mr. Brown is unmuted, so he can speak at any time he would like to start.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Can you hear me?
Yes. I can.
Okay, great. Flexity of adjusting the boundaries, one item I would like to, you know, kind of address specifically is even with the establishment of the future annexation area, no additional property outside of the boundaries of the Diablo Meadows project would, can be taxed without two things occurring. One, the approval of the property owners, right? So, it's essentially a vote. And then, second, approval of the city council. So, again, any time that, you know, a project comes forward, there would be an opportunity to see whether it makes sense for that project, whether there is a condition for them to, you know, annex into a streetlight district. If they were already paying the streetlight district, you know, it wouldn't be required. But I mean, there, this is an item that would come before the council and it would be required to vote on to be subject to the CFD.
Do we, oh, sorry. Do we know if those, what the, how do I say this? What the rule set is for that future action? Is it, does it have its own special process like this whole creation? Or does it follow the general taxation guidelines that we've already discussed in prior meetings?
It is a, there would have to be a request to join the district. The council would have to authorize the annexation of the properties and the property owners would have to vote to approve the tax.
What's the threshold?
For?
For both of those? You mentioned two votes, so I'm curious what the threshold is.
The initial, sorry, the initial vote obviously would be with the council to allow someone, an area to be annexed in. I would call on Brian to confirm in terms of the, if an area wants to be annexed in, the number of sort of votes, what the percentage that's required. Brian, can you answer that question?
Yeah. Typically, what would happen is that, say, a project came on, it would require, you know, unanimous approval to move forward with the annexation.
Unanimous from the residents?
Well, it would be typically, if it was from the residents, it would be two-thirds from the registered voters. But typically, the way that an annexation would happen is it would be for a new project or development that was coming online, and at that point, it would be a landowner election, which would require unanimous approval from the property owner to move forward.
Okay. So, we're saying that there is zero possibility unless you have unanimous support from all the landowners that would be annexed in? Is that accurate?
Yeah, they'd go through.
For taxation within this district.
Sorry, Mr. Brown, you were saying?
Yeah, I mean, it, for taxation within this district, that's correct. They'd be going through and they would be, they essentially petition, there'd be, you know, waivers, there would be an election, a ballot, similar to what happened, what's going to happen this evening, and they would have to approve annexing into this territory, annexing their territory into the CFD. So, this future annexation area by no means allows for any taxing of property other than the Diablo Meadows project at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions of staff?
Mala had a follow-up here, I think.
I just wanted to follow up to answer the council member Juan's question. I did follow up with my colleague. While he does think that we could potentially amend the boundaries tonight, he did want to do some additional research, which would then require us to continue the public hearing to a date certain. I don't believe there's enough time to do that, so in order to timely take action, you would need to either proceed as is with the boundaries with the entire city.
Does that seem strange to anyone else?
It doesn't to me, only because there are safeguards around it. I think if there weren't, then I would be concerned and understand the validity of your, of your concerns. But given that there are several steps to have to go through, this doesn't seem like there's any potential other than to help staff in the future, should this come to fruition, like it's going to help them timewise. I don't see that there's an issue with this, though.
So, just to reiterate, just for my own edification here, zero percent possibility unless one hundred percent of the landowners or owners of property vote to join the CFD. Like, one person could essentially hang the whole thing if, in the entire district that wants to join. Is that accurate?
Under this existing process.
For a landowner election, that is correct. That's what's going on with Diablo Meadows. Obviously, we're going to open the ballots shortly for the De Nova Homes properties, but for a landowner election, that's correct. So, it's very unlikely you'll see an area that has like a hundred different property owners want to all annex in. That would be a different type of election. But in terms of future subdivision annexations, like similar to Diablo Meadows, and that's probably the case when we're going to see these types of annexation, that, that, well, there'll be likely conditions of approval associated with that development, and then there'll be a requirement for that landowner to vote on the acceptance of annexing in and then also allowing additional assessments to those properties, which are obviously going to get likely sold to future homeowners.
Yeah, it makes sense in the case of like a developer because they are the only landowner, so they're going to pass the vote. You mentioned that is the way that it would work in a landowner election. Is there any other mechanism by which parcels could join the CFD that is not a landowner election?
I believe what Mr. Brown said earlier, like typical of any new or a special district, a two-thirds vote is typically required to pass an additional assessment on a group of area. So, within that boundaries, those property owners would have to pass it by two-thirds.
So, like a traditional, any traditional tax? Okay. And then, you mentioned there would need to be two votes for that method or for that mechanism. The first is at the council level and then the two-thirds. Is that?
So, the first vote would be the council itself, the city deciding that it would agree to annex in a particular area, and then the second would be the vote of those property owners.
Okay. And what's the threshold? I know the two-thirds for the, for the, two-thirds for the property owners at the city level, the threshold is also two-thirds?
It would be council majority, is that the question you're asking? Yes.
Because I think in the case of, in the case of others, it is a two-thirds at the council, but is it, is that not true here for this type?
No, and it's not for a tax implementation. It doesn't require a two-thirds vote at the council.
For an annexation? I was trying to get clarity around like the process here if we were to go down that route.
In this particular case, the city is not choosing, is not taxing, you know, as a whole, you know, the community, that's a different type of tax. These property owners would be asking to annex in, certainly, I believe, then the council has to agree. And I recognize you're trying to make the distinction what that vote is, but the actual vote of the folks that, or the voters or the property owners within an area would either be a hundred percent by, in a developer-type situation, or a two-thirds majority on more an individual basis of those particular property owners within the area that's planning to be annexed in.
Okay. That's all my questions.
Councilmembers, do we have any other questions of staff on this particular item? Not seeing any. Has the clerk received any written protest?
I have received zero written protest on this item.
And with that, I now declare the hearing closed and the time is eight forty-two. I have a motion to adopt the following resolutions. The resolutions of the city council, the city of Clayton, California, establishing community facilities district number twenty twenty-two dash O one, public services, and designating the future annexation area and taking other actions relating thereto. And resolution of the city council for the city of Clayton, calling a special landowner election for community facilities district number twenty twenty-two dash O one, public services and the designation for a future annexation area. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, but please tell me I don't have to repeat all of that.
You do not.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion by Vice Mayor Tillman, a second by Councilmember Wolf. Is there any further discussion?
Are we, is anyone comfortable, as Mala said, in changing the future annexation area if that is, is potential and then moving forward with that by, I mean, I think what you said was, it's probably possible, but you need to do more research? Is that right?
Correct. So, you would need to continue the public hearing to a date certain if you wanted to do that.
We would need to, or we couldn't just do it?
No, I wouldn't recommend you do that without the surety that we could do that legally.
You're saying we don't have enough time to do that?
I think that's what they're saying. I mean, the builder has a timeline and I think they're planning to actually, you know, sell market and sell the homes shortly. I mean, within the next two months, I think, if I recall. Right, something like that timeline?
It's within a matter of weeks, if not. The timing was to try to get to this meeting prior to them selling the first home, which would then trigger a different type of.
Because they would no longer be the landowner.
Exactly.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know. It, it's just, it's something that was surprising when I read the, when I read the packet, so I, yeah, that's all. I think it's probably fine, but I'm not, I'm not sure if I like the approach, that's all.
With that, I have a first motion by Vice Mayor Tillman, a second by Councilmember Wolf. Janet, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Juan?
Aye.
Councilmember Wolf?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tillman?
Aye.
Mayor Cloven?
Aye. And with that, motion passes with a vote of five to nothing. The council members casting, no council members casting descending votes. Resolution of the city council, the city of Clayton, California, establishing the community facilities district number twenty twenty-two, public services, and designating a future annexation area and taking other actions related thereto, and the community facilities district is officially formed. The resolution calling for a special election that was just adopted calls for a special election within the community facilities district number twenty twenty-two dash O one to authorize the annual levy of special taxes within the CFD number twenty twenty-two dash O one in accordance with the rate and method of apportionment of special tax to pay for the cost of public services and establishes an appropriations limit within the CFD number twenty twenty-two dash O one, which is to be held at this time by the city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Cloven. All ballots have been cast in connection with the election for CFD number twenty twenty-two dash zero one, and the election is now closed. I have received one ballot, so I will go ahead and open that right now.
Anticipation.
I know. And opening my ballot, I have received a yes vote for the ballot measure.
Having received the certificate of the city clerk certifying the results of the election, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the city council of the city of Clayton, California, declaring the results of the special landowner election and directing recording of the notice of special tax lien for the community facilities district number twenty twenty-two dash O one, public services, and designating a future annexation area. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Wolf, a second by Vice Mayor Tillman. Is there any further discussion? And with that, we'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Juan?
Aye.
Councilmember Wolf?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tillman?
Aye.
Mayor Cloven?
Aye. And with that, the motion passes unanimously. I would now like to ask for a motion to waive further reading of the, and introduce by title and ordinance levying special taxes within the community facilities district number twenty twenty-two dash O one. Is there a motion?
Yes, please. Yes, so moved.
A second.
We got a motion by Councilmember Wolf. Vice Mayor Tillman is the second. Janet, will you read the roll again, please?
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Juan?
Aye.
Councilmember Wolf?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tillman?
Aye.
Mayor Cloven?
Aye. And with that, the motion passes unanimously. And we are now officially done with item number I eight A, and we now get to move on to action items, number nine. And we have finished already, item number nine A earlier with the celebration of the memory of Braden Vehi. And we'll move on to item number nine B, which is an approval of the preliminary design concept for the complete streets feasibility study at Pine Hollow Road, a joint project with the city of Concord. And I'll give it to you again, Larry.
Given the length of the meeting, I'm going to be brief. I think the council's aware there is a project being preliminarily scoped along Pine Hollow Road that basically goes from Clayton Valley High School all the way up to Mount Diablo Elementary along Pine Hollow Road. We, it is a joint project with city of Concord where most of the project is located within Concord. The, sort of the east end is in Clayton. Adam Denkberg from Kimley Horn is the lead consultant for this, both Concord and Clayton on this project, and he's going to be doing a presentation for you tonight.
Greetings, welcome.
All right, thank you for having me here tonight. Okay, great, thank you.
All right, thank you. Once again, I'm Adam Denkberg with Kimley Horn, the consultant retained by Concord and Clayton for this project. Here to talk about the Pine Hollow Road Complete Streets Feasibility Study, next slide. And I'll try and keep this fairly brief as well. Walk through overview of the project, describe some of the improvements that we have identified, some next steps. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you may have. We are looking for an action tonight to approve the feasibility study. Next slide, please. And next slide. So this, as Larry mentioned, this is a two point two mile corridor that we analyzed between Clayton Valley Charter High School and Mount Diablo Elementary School. The funding for this study came from Caltrans through a planning grant received by the City of Concord. And we worked very closely with both Clayton and Concord staff over the duration of this project to develop, identify recommendations, work with the community, and get to this point. Next slide, please. So, might be a little hard to read for, for some folks, but we started this project a little over a year ago in mid twenty twenty-one. And had several rounds of outreach and engagement that I'll talk through. We had an advisory group that included each of the schools on the corridor, as well as bike Concord, county connection, the bus operator, and of course, city staff. We also reached out to the quarries and to bike East Bay over the course of the project. And then we had an extensive amount of community engagement, that I'll touch on, next slide. So just a little bit more context about the study area. It's a very unique corridor. There's actually five different schools on the corridor, covering the full range of the educational spectrum, over forty-two hundred students. So incredible amount of school activity in the corridor. There all, are also two quarries that access, either access onto or across the corridor. Currently, there's no bike lanes on the street. There's a lot of sidewalk gaps and substandard paths. And the corridor is plagued by cut through traffic as, as folks try and bypass congestion on Clayton and YVR. And then also truck traffic primarily associated with the, with the quarries. Next slide. So the goal of the project is to reduce auto speeds and improve traffic safety to provide continuous and more comfortable pedestrian facilities, as well as provide connected bicycle facilities. The images on the bottom show some of the existing configuration in the corridor. You know, this condition is not necessarily present in the Clayton portion, but there are some pieces that do have some of these really significantly missing sidewalk gaps and, and other issues such as lighting and, and things like that. So it's definitely a challenging corridor, particularly when considering all the, the student activity. Next slide. So we begin our outreach process in mid twenty twenty-one with a survey, an online survey of the community. And we received over a thousand votes on the, on the survey, and over two hundred comments on the map, and over a hundred on this additional set of survey questions. What's shown on the screen is a heat map showing basically locations. We allowed folks to put a pin or a dot on the map indicating where they thought there was an issue in the corridor. And so you can see the focus is in that center part of the corridor. That's where Highlands Elementary and Pine Hollow Middle School are. Not surprisingly, at Anatio Valley Road. And you can see a little dot at the, towards the eastern end, near Mount Diablo Elementary. The pie chart in the upper right kind of shows the distribution of concerns, with a lot of concerns result around autos and pedestrian. Next slide. So we also asked about community priorities. And you can see the, really the top three or four really jump out at you. Improve traffic circulation, improve pedestrian safety, reducing traffic speeds, and wider new sidewalks. Some of those can go hand in hand, but you can see those four really jumped out, and that really guided us as we were then from this point went and identified some recommended improvements. Next slide. We came back to the community then in fall twenty twenty-one with those initial recommendations. I'll, I'll touch on the recommendations in a, in a minute. So we had pop-up workshops at three different schools on the corridor, including Mount Diablo Elementary. We had an online community workshop, of course, still impacted by COVID restrictions, so we had an online workshop. And then we also had another online survey where folks could look at the actual proposed recommendations and drop pins and dots right on top of those recommendations and provide feedback about their thoughts on them. Next slide. And so we had a survey going along with that, and there's some really interesting responses as part of that survey. Almost eighty percent of the folks said that they would be encouraged to ride a bike on the corridor if there's some sort of bike improvement in the corridor. Almost sixty percent, this one I think is really important, almost sixty percent of respondents with children on the corridor thought that they would actually allow their kids to walk and bike with these types of improvements. And that's really important as we're trying to reduce some of the traffic congestion, as well as improve just overall walkability and accessibility for students on this corridor. And then almost eighty percent also would be encouraged to walk more on Pine Hollow Road if sidewalks were constructed. Again, important for health and, and safety and comfort and just overall quality of life. Next slide. And then finally, the last round of engagement included a one day pop-up demonstration. This was back in April. I don't know if any of you drove by the corridor on this day, but in front of Pine Hollow Middle School, we did a little one day demonstration of what a two-way bike facility would look like on this short little segment. Obviously, we couldn't build anything for one day, so it was just paint and cones and whatnot. So we don't want folks to get the impression that this is what it ultimately looked like, but we want to get people excited about the project, aware of the project. And so we did a two-way cycle track, a new crosswalk, and, and did all this five-thirty in the morning, had it out for the day, and took it down at the end of the day. It was great. We had students come up to us at the end of the school day and just like thanked us from the bottom of their heart that we were doing this, and we're so excited because it made it safer for them to use the corridor. And guys were really excited about, about the types of improvements here. We did note some challenges with auto traffic around school, particularly pickup times. And that's something that we'll have to continue working with the schools on. Obviously, folks didn't really change their travel patterns for one day, and so I think that's part of the solution as well. Next slide. Okay, so to talk about the design, next slide. There's a, a number of different types of improvements throughout the corridor, so I'll walk by, by kind of segment, or, sorry, by type of improvement. So the first one is crossings. So we've identified quite a number of new or improved crossings on the corridor. And that's one of the challenges right now, is that it's really hard to cross Pine Hollow, particularly in Concord where it's a four-lane section, or speeds are higher. And so we've identified quite a number of treatments, either additional crossings or improved crossings like lighting and beacons, median refuges, raising the crosswalks to make those crossings safer. And so make pedestrians more visible, increase yielding by autos, slow vehicle speeds. Next slide. There's some locations where there are sidewalk gaps, and so those are what's shown in red. So we provide new sidewalks in those areas. There's some kind of pathways in Clayton, but those really don't meet sidewalk standards. And so the idea would be to upgrade those to appropriate ADA standards, Americans with Disability Act standards. Next slide. In terms of bicycle improvements, there's a variety of bicycle treatments that have, we have proposed based on the available geometrics in the corridor. And unfortunately, the, the road narrows are, fortunately, depending on your perspective, the road narrows quite a bit once you get into Clayton. And so there just really isn't room to provide dedicated bike lanes in this corridor. One of the basic tenets of the project is we aren't taking private right of way to, to make these improvements. So within the public right of way, there's just not really an opportunity to put in dedicated bike lanes. And so we have sharrows recommended, bike, bike route with sharrows in Clayton. There would be bike lanes included in Concord, either a two-way cycle track west of Pine Hollow Middle School, or, or one-way cycle tracks east of Highlands Elementary to the, the city border. If you're familiar with the area, the, the width of roadway just massively and suddenly narrows right as you cross the city battery. And so the idea would still provide this high-quality bicycle facility, just noting that we're limited by width to what we can do in Clayton. Next slide. We also have some additional truck, some truck and bus kind of signage and notification recommendations, as well as additional traffic calming recommendations. For traffic calming, the idea is to lower traffic speeds and improve safety. So things like speed feedback signs, additional raised medians to reduce the perceived width of the roadway and make it just feel more like a community, a local street, residential street, as opposed to a bypass route or a thoroughfare. Next slide. And so then in terms of wrapping this up, next slide. So the, the action, of course, requested here today is to approve the recommended concepts. There's a, a lot of detail in terms of some specific recommendations. I'm not sure if those have been shared with council, or they are available online. But the action here is to, to request approval of the study. And, next slide. So in terms of next steps, the funding that was received from Caltrans was for the study. There hasn't been funding identified for the actual designer implementation improvements, but the cities of Concord and Clayton went in together on a ATP application that was submitted a couple of months back. The submittal request was for ten million dollars, which would not fund all the improvements that I talked about today, but would allow us to implement all the really high priority, kind of most urgently needed ones. And, and we're waiting to hear back on that application. I think it'll be about two more months before we hear back on that. There's other potential funding sources as well, but that was the first logical one that, that came along. So I think I'll hand it back to Larry, or Janet, if there's anything else?
I would add one other thing. I believe Adam did this similar presentation for the City of Concord's council about a month ago approximately, and I believe they've already approved the, the recommendations that have come before their, their council. So, just as background.
Thank you, Adam. Thank you, Larry. With that, I'll bring it to City Council for any questions you might have of staff.
Or the engineer.
Yes. Yeah.
Vice Mayor Tillman?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I just have a couple of clarifying questions. I'm looking at slide fourteen of the deck where it has a pedestrian infrastructure improvements. And I'm trying to understand what the improved crossing looks like at Mitchell Canyon and Tiffin. Can you explain a little bit more about that?
Yeah, so there would be a variety of improvements at that location. One of the improvements includes providing bull bouts at each of the corners. Right now, the, really, both intersections, the, kind of the sidewalk area is sort of pulled back, allowing for a higher speed turning movement and resulting in a longer crossing distance. And so obviously, we have to accommodate, whether it be delivery truck turns or vehicle turns. But within that kind of requirement, we are able to, we would be able to like bring, essentially bring the sidewalk further out into the street and provide a shorter crossing distance, and that also improves pedestrian visibility. I think there's some lighting improvements proposed there. And then certainly at Mount Zion, I think, I forgot exactly where it landed, Mitchell Canyon, but definitely Mount Zion, we have proposed a raised crosswalk. And so that would improve visibility of pedestrians and really serves as a traffic calming device to slow vehicle speeds and, and improve yielding as well.
Okay. So there's not additional crossing guards, it's changing? I, I knew it was in the actual deck, I was looking for it in here. I knew I saw the different colors. Um, okay. And then the other, only other question I had was for the, the actual sidewalk addition, so the new sidewalk that's between, it looks like it's west of Panadero and then up to Tiffin?
Yep.
Can you describe again? I know you said it during your presentation, but what exactly is that going to look like?
Yeah, so right now, there's an asphalt berm separating essentially just another asphalt area that's basically the sidewalk from the roadway. So the idea would be to provide a proper concrete sidewalk there. Certainly, some drainage improvements would be needed as part of that improvement. But we would essentially provide a, a proper concrete sidewalk with a proper ramp configuration at the intersections, driveway, you know, adjustments and, and things like that.
And then I, I can't find what a shero looks like without me having to, to GTS. So can you?
Yeah, that's the.
Can you describe that?
It's just a, a marking, a paint marking on the roadway with a bike symbol with a two triangle arrows above it. There are some sharrows, I believe, I think Alberta Way actually has sharrows on parts today. But, yeah, it's, there's no separate facility, it's just markings on the roadway to help encourage sharing the road.
Okay, so there's enough space there to add the sidewalk and put the sharrows in that?
So the, the sharrows just go in the travel lane.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Got it.
So yeah, essentially, the sidewalk goes where the path is today.
Understood.
And then the markings just go in the roadway.
So, as narrow as that section is, I'm just trying to envision it, it's really narrow there.
Yeah.
We're going to add sidewalk to whatever that path that is already there? So you're not, you're not going to encroach anymore into the street?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
I, I have a couple of questions.
Councilmember Juan?
Did you, I'm looking at your, slide fifteen, I guess, about the sidewalks, again, same, same slide. Was the area on Mitchell Canyon north of Pine Hollow included in any of the design work? Because I note that, you know, here where you're talking about a prior from, on the south side of Pine Hollow, from Panadero to Tiffin, like there is that existing hardscape of some kind. There's probably a real name for it, but I don't know what it is. But when you're looking at Mitchell Canyon north of Pine Hollow, it's like a mix of sidewalk that starts and stops in the middle of nowhere. And then there's a crossing, like we have a crosswalk with no sidewalk, but there is, I don't know if that's in the public right of way. Was this area considered? Because that is a, that is also a pathway that we have a lot of pedestrian traffic to the school.
No, Mitchell Canyon is not part of the study area, so we didn't, we didn't look at it.
That would be, I think that, well, it's not, it's out of scope of this, I suppose. But that, that area, I think, is ripe for improvement as well, because I think you have all of the same problems, but even more throughput and, and less visibility, so. Plus, we've had incidents of, you know, accidents in that area as well. And I think we talked earlier in the meeting about other traffic improvements on that same area. Okay, so if that's outside the scope. So then, I guess my only other question is, what does, because what you're asking for is approval of this feasibility study? What's your desired outcome of the feasibility study? Like what, what's the, what's the output of the study? If, if you go forward, what are you looking to get?
Do you want to take that, or? I can take it if you want.
The goal is basically to allow the project to go forward and look for funding, and then ultimately move into a, a further level of design. But this would allow us to have the, you know, documentation, if you will, with the ATP grant and any other grant applications that the councils of the two jurisdictions are supportive of moving forward with these basic, the, the improvements outlined in the feasibility study.
I get that part. Let me rephrase. What's the deliverable at the end of the feasibility study? Like, is it a report? Is it something that says this is how much it will cost? What does it say?
Both, yes. So there is a, a report currently in draft form, undergoing staff review, that summarizes all the recommendations, has the concepts and appendix and outreach summaries and all that. And we do have cost estimates as well. So that is the final deliverable, is, is that report.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from staff, I mean, from council? With that, we'll open this up to public comment. If there are any public comments in the room or out in our virtual audience, please raise your hand now. Seeing none in our room, Janet, do we have any hands on this?
We do have one hand raised. David, you have been promoted to panelist. If you can please unmute your microphone, you will have three minutes to speak.
There we go. Thank you, Mayor Cloven and council members. I have a few comments and questions related to this item. Some of my comments relate to Pine Hollow Road within the City of Clayton, and others relate to Pine Hollow Road in the City of Concord, but I felt it was best to give my input during a City of Clayton council meeting, since I am a Clayton resident. So, going forward with that, number one, I think that another safety item that should be added to Pine Hollow Road are signs between the Martin Marietta Quarry and Mitchell Canyon roads stating that no quarry truck traffic is allowed. I've often observed trucks taking a shortcut between the quarries if they've gone to the wrong one and driving on Pine Hollow Road that is not a truck route instead of taking Clayton Road and YVR. So I think there should be some effort to keep trucks off of that section that are trying to travel between the quarries, particularly because the intersection at Mitchell Canyon is, and Pine Hollow is so sharp. So that's my first comment. My second comment, I wanted to know if there was going to be a speed limit for bikes on the two-way track like there is on the Canal Trail, because if there is, what's the alternative for bikes that go faster? I ride my bike when I'm working out down Pine Hollow Road at twenty to twenty-five miles an hour. Is there going to be any sort of a safety lane for bikes? Is there going to be any sort of a safety lane for bikes in their reconfigured area on Pine Hollow Road? I also want to know if bikes are going to be riding upwards of 15 miles an hour in the two-way cycle track? Is there going to be some education campaign for the residents that are going to be encountering bikes riding on the wrong side of the road, particularly those coming off of Rolling Woods or out of Discovery Way? Because they're not used to looking for bikes coming down the wrong side of the road at that speed. And also, there should be some sort of a campaign to educate the children on which side of the cycle track to ride on. I noticed in the picture tonight that the consultant used in his presentation, there is a girl riding on the wrong side of the cycle track. I also wanted to know if there's going to be any improvements in the lighting at the crosswalk on Alberta Way at the, at the school. They do talk about pedestrian lighting and increasing the lighting at some of the crossings, and there is one in front of the high school that really needs more lighting. And let's see. I wanted to know, is there a plan to address any increased traffic in Crystal Ranch neighborhood if drivers are trying to bypass any part of this improvements where I believe they're going to go down to one lane from four lanes to two lanes on that portion of Pine Hollow Road between YBR and the quarry? And so I think maybe if people start getting backed up, they might try to cut through Crystal Ranch. And finally, I want to know if there's a plan to evaluate the effectiveness of these improvements and if they've made things worse, such as increased bike and car collisions or problems with pedestrians and cars. Is there a plan to return it back or make it better? And so those are my comments for tonight's item. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. It's much appreciated. Janet, any other questions out in our virtual land?
Mayor Cloven, I do not have any other hands raised on this item.
Thank you very much. We'll take those comments into consideration. I'm sure the consultant has heard them as well and is nodding his head. Let's bring it back to council. Are there any other discussion on this item?
Did you want to respond to any of those comments? I'm just curious, because I am actually curious how you, the gentleman brought up a fair point. You know, if you have two-way bike traffic on one side of the road, like people aren't really familiar with looking the other way for, for traffic moving at upwards of 15 to 20 miles an hour as a bike would do? Like, how is that handled in other areas where this has been implemented? Are you familiar with that? I'm curious.
Yes, and there's certainly a growing proliferation of two-way cycle tracks in the Bay Area as folks look to provide higher quality facility that are safer for cyclists. So I think people are going to start encountering them more and more as they drive around. You know, one of the reasons, there's a lot of discussion I can have as far as the thinking behind the two-way cycle track and the limits and all that. Basically, the short of it is that we're recommending the two-way cycle track where we are, west of Pine Hollow Middle, because there are fewer conflict points on that side of the roadway. There is a conflict point in Rolling Woods, but it's a signalized intersection, so there's treatments you can do, such as no right turn on red to avoid conflicts there. There's very few driveway conflicts along the two-way cycle track there, whereas there are on the north side of the street. And so that's why we felt it beneficial to have the cycle track on the south side. Regarding the comments around education, I think that's a logical thing to consider as, you know, when we get to construction in terms of how to, you know, how students can ride in the facility. And no, no speed limit, I don't think is currently envisioned. That's an operational decision that can be made later, but we aren't anticipating a speed limit specific to the bike lanes. So yeah, I think in general, it's, these two-way cycle tracks have shown to be safe and effective where they have been implemented, and cities are looking to add more of them. Certainly, you know, once this goes in design, we would look at very specific design treatments at those conflict points, whether it be signage or improved visibility or signal controls, such as at Rolling Woods, that would maximize safety.
Thank you very much for those comments. Any other discussion among council? There being none, I would call for a vote, because there are a motion to approve these preliminary measures for the complete street measures along Pine Hollow.
I'd move it.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Juan, a second by Vice Mayor Tillman. Janet, we call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Diaz.
Yes.
Councilmember Juan.
Aye.
Councilmember Wolf.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tillman.
Aye.
Mayor Cloven.
Aye. With that, it passes unanimously, and we close item number nine B and move on to item number nine C, which is a discussion and feedback for Clayton's Transpac representative regarding the CCTA Transpac designation of Marsh Creek Road and Clayton Roads as routes of regional significance. And with that, we'll turn it over to Larry. Again.
Yes. It is tonight. Now, we actually have several members of, that have been working on this project between CCTA and their consultant Placeworks and the Transpac staff as well present tonight. But the, the main purpose of bringing this item before the council was to provide an opportunity for the council as a whole to discuss these future planning efforts for the CCTA action plan, which includes a mapping or a designation of a multimodal route of regional significance along Marsh Creek Road and through Clayton and Clayton Road up to Inishah Valley. So you do have a current representative, appointed representative, Mayor Cloven, who sits on the Transpac Committee and has participated in some of these meetings and will also be able to speak to those items. But I was going to introduce John Wong from CCTA, is the Planning Director, who is leading the effort for the update for the action plan. So John can come up, and I believe we also have Torina Wilson and David Early from Placeworks available via Zoom to do a short presentation, and then we would open it up for discussion among the council.
Thanks, Larry. Good evening, Mayor Cloven, Vice Mayor Tillman, and council members. John Wong, I'm the Director of Planning for the Contra Costa Transportation Authority, and thank you for having me here tonight. As your city engineer mentioned, this is regarding the regional routes of significance. And just to put things into context, CCTA is the sales tax authority for the Measure J, which is the transportation sales tax for Contra Costa. And part of that role is that we, we do the countywide transmission plan, which was last updated in 2017. So as part of that process, we take a step back and actually do these action plans, and these action plans, each, each of the four subregions in the county does have an action plan. Actually, so we have four subregions, we have five action plans, but for Transpac specifically, the, the committee, which is actually, is called Transportation Partnership and Cooperation, just in case you're wondering what that stands for. It consists of, consists of six cities, Clayton, Concord, Martinez, Pleasant Hill, Warner Creek, and the undercorporate county. And Matt Todd, the Managing Director, I want to acknowledge him, he's in the back row there here also. So these action plans are done by the RTPCs and really your staff has been working on this. And we actually started this back a year ago, and we're at the tail end of this, and and part of this is, is the bottoms-up approach. So the action plan is done at the RTPCs, and actually in the staff report, I noticed that it mentions CCTA action plan. It should be Transpac action plan, just to be clear. So the action plans are the bottoms-up approach, and then it rolls into the countywide transmission plan, which CCTA will be leading, starting later this year, once the action plans are approved by the RTPCs. Now, keep in mind that CCTA's role in this, in the action plan, is really to facilitate it. We brought on a consultant, Placeworks, to help the RTPCs develop these action plans. But once, but the approval and the content of the action plan is really up to the RTPCs. Once the, the plans are approved by the RTPCs, it goes up to CCTA and we just accept the plans. We don't really comment or anything or make any changes to those plans. With that, I know I have my consultant, Placeworks. He kind of took a glance at the PowerPoint. There's very comprehensive information about explaining what the whole process is, and hopefully you can glean some background information to help kind of, you understand what, what the whole process is and really delve into what the reason, what the, the regional routes of significance really mean in the, in the whole context. So with that, I'm going to hand it off to David Early to present.
Good evening. I'm David Early, and I obviously am on Zoom. Can someone just confirm for me that you can at least hear me, if not see me, and also see the slides that we're projecting?
We could do all of the both.
Great. Okay. It's a pleasure to be able to join you this evening. I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person, but I did get pretty short notice about this meeting, but I'm pleased that John and Torina and I can all be here, at least virtually. By way of introduction, I run an office called Placeworks here in Berkeley. We have worked extensively throughout the Bay Area, and actually, I've been in this business for 25 or 30 years, and one of my very first projects was to prepare the Marsh Creek Road specific plan for the city of Clayton about, like I say, about 25 or 30 years ago. So I know Marsh Creek Road quite well. I know the city of Clayton quite well, and it's a pleasure to be able to be here to represent CCTA on the action plans. The slide before you shows the agenda for the presentation I'm going to give. I'm going to talk about some background about the action plans and give an overview. I'm going to talk about the routes of regional significance, particularly as it applies to roadways, and then I'm going to talk about next steps as well. And the real, I think the real reason we're here is that I believe that Mayor Cloven had some concerns about the possible designation of Marsh Creek Road as a route of regional significance, and I'm hoping that I can explain that, explain how we believe that it will not lead to additional impacts in Clayton and will in fact be a benefit to the city of Clayton, assuage any concerns you might have, and answer any questions that you might have about this. Next slide. So I want to begin by talking a little bit about what John already mentioned, which is the Measure J Growth Management Program. I know as council members, you all are quite familiar with this already. Measure J does include the half-cent sales tax that you pay whenever you make purchases in Contra Costa County, and that money funds transportation improvements throughout the county. It includes money that's called local streets and roads, or sometimes called return to source funds, which include, which are 18% of Measure J revenues and which go back to the individual cities in which the funds are spent in order to help with local roadway maintenance. Measure J and the half-cent sales tax have also been instrumental in a number of other improvements, including the fourth bore of the Caldecott Tunnel, the widening of Highway Four in East County, new improvements happening along Interstate 680, and a host of other projects throughout the county. Measure J, if I could have the next slide, Measure J does also include growth management features, including the requirement for an urban limit line, which is implemented in all the cities in the county and which focuses development away from greenfields and preserves valuable agriculture and open-spaced lands. So this is all part of a package that occurs under Measure J and the county's growth management program. Next slide, please. The, one of the things in the growth management program is that it requires each of the five subregions to prepare a, an action plan. We are in the process of updating the existing action plan for Transpac or the central part of Contra Costa County, and the action plans in each of the five areas have goals, objectives, and performance measures for major arterials, transit lines, and bicycle facilities and trails. New development is required to comply with the regional transportation objectives, also called multimodal transportation of service objectives, which are included in the plan. And one of the things that happens when routes of regional significance are designated is that all neighboring jurisdictions are required to work cooperatively when planning for any improvements or projects that might impact, impact any of those routes of regional significance. So what the, the action plans in summary, among other things, they identify these routes of regional significance and then require that jurisdictions work together to understand impacts that any development might have on those routes of regional significance. What that means is that communities that are downstream from development are essentially protected, or at least need to get to learn about potential impacts of growth that might occur upstream from them. Next slide. So the action plans, by, again, by way of background, they establish a cooperative planning process that is multi-jurisdictional. They do set a set of objectives for the routes of regional significance and countywide. They are, as John said, they're developed by the individual regional transportation planning committees, known as RTPCs. One of those is Transpac, and they're developed with input from local jurisdictions, such as yourselves. The local jurisdictions remain responsible for implementation, and the action plans set the goals, objectives, and actions that are intended to mitigate cumulative impacts of growth on the regional transportation system. And before I go to the next slide, let me say that this is a unique situation in Contra Costa County. Contra Costa County is the only county in the state, and as far as I know, in the entire country, that has anything like an action plan process. It's the only place where you see mandated interregional cooperation among jurisdictions, and it's one of the most successful programs that I'm aware of anywhere in the state to ensure that communities are really talking to each other to make sure that the potential impacts from growth are both identified and mitigated. Next slide. So to focus in now on the routes of regional significance, which I believe are one of your major interests tonight, these are identified within the action plan by the RTPC. So this, the action plan for, for Central County will include a mapping of the routes of regional significance, and these are defined as the vital connections that support economic and recreational activities throughout the county. As I've already said, identification of a route of regional significance, the primary point there is to ensure that local jurisdictions coordinate their plans. Once a route is designated as a route of regional significance, that requires that surrounding jurisdictions inform you in Clayton of any project that might impact that route so that you can be aware that it is occurring and you can plan accordingly. Setting a route of regional significance also provides for the creation of objectives set by your RTPC for the route of regional significance, and it requires that future development be evaluated for impacts. It's important to understand that under SB 743, Senate Bill 743, which I think most of you are familiar with, a traffic analysis about congestion is no longer required under SEQA, meaning not in an EIR, not in a negative declaration, but the process surrounding RRSs or routes of regional significance is one of the only ways that we ensure evaluation and coordination among communities, since SEQA no longer requires the evaluation of those impacts. Additionally, identification of a route of regional significance can lead to additional funding from CCTA, from the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, or other agencies to provide additional safety improvements or other improvements along a roadway that's been identified as a route of regional significance. Next slide. So we have two separate criteria for the designation of a route of regional significance. Not every facility that meets these two requirements must be designated, but no facility can be designated unless it meets these two requirements. The first of them is that it has to be a route where jurisdictions within the subarea agree that they want to share regional responsibility with neighboring jurisdictions. So taking Marsh Creek Road as an example, this would be an agreement with both the communities in East County where Marsh Creek Road runs, and also those further west, such as the city of Concord, that you all recognize that Marsh Creek Road is important to the region as a whole and should be managed from a regional perspective. In addition to that, as the slide shows, it needs to fulfill at least one of the, of the other criteria that are listed here. It needs to connect two or more subareas within the county, or it needs to cross county boundaries, it needs to carry significant through traffic, or it needs to provide access to a regional center, a regional highway, or a transit facility. In the case of Marsh Creek Road, we have identified that it seems to meet at least some of these second set of criteria. It does connect to two or more subareas of Contra Costa County because it runs from East County into Central County. It also pretty clearly provides access to regional centers, such as the fact that it provides the only access for the city of Clayton into the rest of Central County. So in that sense, it is providing access to regional So in that sense, it is providing access to regional centers, to regional highways, and to transit facilities. So we do believe that Marsh Creek Road meets the requirements for being a route of regional significance, and then the question becomes whether Transpac as a whole, together with TransPlan, which is the RTPC in the East County, whether the two of your RTPCs agree that it should be designated or not. Now, we did get a request initially from East County, that is from TransPlan, to designate it as one, as a route of regional significance, and then that was brought to Transpac as well, to your technical advisory committee, who ultimately concurred that it would make sense to designate it, particularly because of safety issues along the roadway, because whether we like it or not, there are people commuting on that route from East County to Central County, and because of both safety and bicycling issues on the, the route. So let's go to the next slide. I want to mention in here what regional routes of regional significance are not. You have heard me say that they are intended to provide disclosure and to be able to allow for regional management. It is not the case, and I think some of this was perhaps confused in your staff report that you received or in other communications that you've seen about this, it is not the case that a route of regional significance is intended to encourage through traffic. It's not intended to encourage higher speeds or additional use. It does not commit you or any other entity to making enhancements to the roadway, no widenings, no added capacity. It does not give other entities, any jurisdiction, over planning or design of the facility within your boundaries, and there is no penalty if you fail to maintain or achieve an objective that goes with the route of regional significance. So I think the fundamental point here, because I did see in some written communication, people should consider how being a route of regional significance might encourage through traffic or result in higher traffic speeds. That is not the case. It is not a commitment to more through traffic. It's not a commitment to enhancements or widenings. It's simply a recognition that there is a regional nature to this roadway. Next slide. So this is the map of the, draft map of the routes of regional significance that we are looking at in Central County, and you can see on this slide that March, the Marsh Creek Road corridor is one that's designated. It's designated both as a surface roadway carrying vehicular traffic, as well as a bicycle facility that's important for regional bicycle interactions, and this is again at the request of East County and was concurred by your transportation, your technical advisory committee consisting of staff members. Now, there is a very important note on this drawing, and I, I don't know that you can see it on this slide, but it is in the fine print in the lower left-hand corner of the map that says that Marsh Creek Road is being designated solely for purposes of safety and potential future bicycle enhancements, and it's in no way intended that Marsh Creek Road would be widened or created as a facility to carry more vehicular traffic. And in fact, it's my opinion that having it designated with this note on the map is an even more powerful statement than not designating it, because you have here in writing a statement that no widening or capacity enhancement on Marsh Creek Road is foreseen under this plan. If we were to eliminate the designation from the map and we were to eliminate that note, then the plan would say nothing about it and future folks could believe that Marsh Creek Road would be a candidate for widening. We're stating here very clearly that it's not a candidate for widening at all and that it's only designated because of concerns about safety and bicycle access. Next slide. And so just in summary, I want to mention that this is being specifically identified for safety improvements only. No capacity improvements are foreseen, and the primary benefits of this designation are to evaluate impacts that might occur, particularly this would require disclosure from any community in the East County. If they had a project that would put additional traffic onto Marsh Creek Road, they would be required to alert the city of Clayton and other Central County cities about that. It's, so it's requires disclosure, it requires coordination, it requires an evaluation of impacts, and it potentially makes it more possible to achieve funding specifically for safety enhancements and potentially long-term bicycle enhancements as well. But again, no capacity improvements being foreseen, no enhancements, no additional reasons that people would speed or otherwise have additional utilization of the roadway. Next slide. So that does conclude my presentation. I do want to just say again that this was already brought forward to the technical advisory committees in both East County and Central County. We did also present these findings to, to the Transpac Board in August, and I think that's perhaps where Mayor Clovan heard about this. I know that there wasn't a great amount of discussion at that meeting in August. So we're happy to be here tonight to answer any questions you may have and hopefully assuage any concerns that you may have about this designation so that it can move forward, again, specifically only for safety concerns and not as any sort of speed or capacity enhancement. And I'll stop there. I believe John is going to field questions, but if there are technical questions for me, I'm happy for John to turn them over to me and I'll be happy to answer them. Thank you for your time.
Is there any more to your presentation on, on this subject? Appreciate that. And with that, we're going to bring it back to council for questions. Vice Mayor Tillman.
Thanks, Mayor, and thank you both for the presentation and teeing it up. I'm just trying to understand, I think probably everybody in this room's driven out Marsh Creek Road, and so I'm trying to understand what improvements, even for safety, could be made for the drivers and the bikes that are out there. If you're not going to, I don't know, change the street, widen it, et cetera, can you just walk us through what that looks like, potentially?
I have to apologize, I've never ridden that road before.
Wow, you're in for a treat. You should do it this weekend. Go now. Go right now.
But I'll defer that question to David. Can you, can you respond to that, David?
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's important to start by saying there are no plans for specific projects at this time, but at the same time, Vice Mayor, it is conceivable that either the county or the city of Clayton might at some point identify individual places along the roadway where it may be possible, for instance, to include a turnout, perhaps a place to provide refuge for bicyclists, a place to provide a refuge for a car to pass another car, so that one car moving faster than another one would not be tempted to, to pass in a way that's dangerous along that roadway. There may be one or two spots, and again, there's been no planning on this, but there may be one or two spots where a tight curve could be made a little less tight so as to create additional safety. None of these would be considered capacity enhancements, but they are the kinds of things that could provide additional safety. Other examples would be additional guardrails where there's a steep drop-off, a place where it might be appropriate to change the surface of the roadway, to fill potholes or other gaps. Those are all the kinds of projects that might provide safety enhancements if they were desired. And again, I want to emphasize that none of this, none of the designation is in order to do enhancements. Those are the only kinds of enhancements that could occur, but the designation is intended to require the sharing of information and the disclosure of impacts between East County and Central County and from one jurisdictions to another. That's really the point of the route of regional significance is to ensure evaluation and disclosure.
Okay, so if I can paraphrase, if we did not agree to this or adopt it, then it's possible that East County and Central County excluding Clayton could have these conversations and we wouldn't be aware of it and it could affect us? Or what are the ramifications for not doing this?
That is, that is the implication that you, there could be a project in East County or particularly in the city of Brentwood, which is sort of at the end of Marsh Creek Road, that would start sending more traffic across Marsh Creek Road, and particularly with SEQA having changed and there being no requirement for a level of service evaluation under SEQA, it is actually conceivable that you might never hear about this or that there may not be a full traffic study done because it's not a route of regional significance, and then you wouldn't have as much of a chance to respond to that or to ask for any mitigation of it. With it designated as a route of regional significance, you'll have disclosure in place, and if there were a need for safety improvements or other improvements along the roadway, whether it's in the county portion or in, within the city of Clayton, you would both hear about them and be able to request those improvements from whichever agency is looking at approving the project.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember one.
Can you clarify your, your comment that you just said, like, so if we do adopt this and we get notified, you indicated that we could request changes? Is there any requirement that would be imposed to force traffic studies or changes associated with projects that we would be informed of?
John, do you want me to take that?
Yeah, let me take a crack at this and then we can chime in. So being designated a route of regional significance, so it crosses two boundaries, two subregions, so any improvements that, that the TransPlan region wants to do on that segment of roadway would need to be vetted through Transpac, as here to Clayton included, and there needs to be a cooperation and collaboration there to make sure that the Transpac subregion buys off on what the improvements are. And of course, you would have certainly can make requests and recommendations.
Okay, so you're using the permissive language, so it's not a requirement, it's just a request?
It's a requirement, a requirement that, that, that both regions, both the regions come to an agreement with what the improvement should look like.
I think, okay, so that, that kind of shifts a little bit into improvements along the corridor, but I think what was discussed a moment ago was like, if there was a project or development that potentially increased impact downstream, then we would be informed. And then I think the language that was used was, you know, we could request things, but, and, and also to the extent that, you know, traffic studies are no longer a viable component of SEQA analysis as well. So does this, does adopting this type of designation allow us to require that which is not required under SEQA?
David, you want, I'm not too well versed in SEQA.
You would not be in a position to directly require of, say, Contra Costa County.
That's really my question, because it sounds like what you were saying was, it allows us to have input, but at the end of the day, there's no requirement to heed the input. It's really just, thank you very much.
Well, you'll, you'll be in a position to make a very strong request that will require whatever entity is proposing a project to be able to show that they are adequately mitigating any impact within your community. One of the things I will say about Contra Costa, and I already alluded to this, is that you all have an extremely strong track record of regional cooperation on tra, on regional traffic issues, provided that it's within the context of the action plans and the routes of regional significance. So although it's not a strict requirement, there is, there are essentially 30 and 40 years of precedent where once things get designated within an action plan and as a route of regional significance, then both among the regions and within the regions, there's been a great track record of making sure that potential impacts really are mitigated, addressed and mitigated at all times. So it is true that it's not a strict requirement, but at the same time, the precedent is that it, it does create a forum with which, within which concerns that you may have are addressed, and historically, they've been addressed quite completely because they're designated as routes of regional significance.
On, on, on one of the slides, when we talk about the criteria for routes of regional significance, it is not numbered, so I cannot indicate which one it is, but it's the one that says required, and then below it four items that says at least one.
Yeah, I think you just passed it, one more. That's right.
So, and then you had, so there are two questions that are probably similar. Mr. Early, you had mentioned that, you know, this helps ensure that, I'm going to paraphrase what you said, so I don't have the exact quote, but something to the effect of that things are managed regionally, and then on the requirement here, it says routes where the subarea wants to share regional responsibility. So can you elaborate on what that responsibility entails or encompasses?
Yeah, so it's all the things that I already mentioned. So your, your region, or the slide probably should say subregion, your subregion is the Central County, Transpac, and so you, you as a member of Transpac, the city of Clayton, would be agreeing with the city of Concord, the city of Walnut Creek, and, and Contra Costa County, to name a few, who are all members of Transpac, that you all agree that Marsh Creek Road is a facility for which you want to do those things that I've been enumerating. You do all agree that you should share information about projects that might affect the, the roadway. You would commit to listening to each other if impacts, to, to first identifying impacts and then listening to each other about how to address those impacts and attempting to minimize the impacts that would occur, whether they're within your own jurisdiction or in a, in a jurisdiction downstream. And that's true both within the subregion inside of Transpac, and it's also in this case, the case where the regional route goes across from one subregion to another, you would be making this agreement with East County as well. East County is already on record as saying that they want to share that responsibility. They do recognize that they have people in East County who are coming into Central County using this roadway, and they are willing to be responsible to Central County and hence to the city of Clayton, to share any information that they have about impacts that they might have and to make sure that you get a chance to work with them to address those impacts.
On the map, with the very small text, I'm trying to find it here, it's advanced a little bit, I mean, further along in the presentation.
Yeah, it's up on the screen already.
Yeah, that one. So I'm gonna have to, I can't even see, I can't even read it correctly, but it says the Marsh Creek Corridor south of the Clayton City Limit is only being considered for, you know, roadway.
Safety.
Safety. Man, I really need glasses. Yeah. So that, you know, that indication is, is specifically carving out Marsh Creek outside of the city limits. What about, so does that mean Marsh Creek and Clayton Road within the city limits doesn't carry that same cart route?
That's a very interesting question. I, we could certainly, I, we intended that this language applies to the entire corridor of Marsh Creek Road, so I guess those back clause that says south of the Clayton City Limits is really not necessary. The, the concern we heard from other Transpac members was that in the more rural section of Marsh Creek Road, that people wanted to understand, make it clear that no capacity improvements were, were included, and we didn't want language that would preclude the city of Clayton from making capacity improvements inside the city limits. If you all were to suggest that that language, that that clause should be dropped and it should just say the Marsh Creek Road corridor is only being considered for roadway and safety and bike improvements, we could drop that clause. I think that would probably be acceptable to both Transpac and TransPlan, but the language, we wrote the language so as not to, if you will, tie the hands of the city of Clayton for improvements within the city limits, while also being clear that there, there are no such improvements being considered in the, the rural, non-urbanized portions.
If we were to go that route, then I would, I would suggest that we, that we don't specifically say, or we include the portion of Clayton Road that Marsh Creek turns into, because east of Unishio Valley Road, that is actually Clayton Road, and then it turns into Marsh Creek Road at Old Marsh Creek Road, right? Do I have that right? Okay. So I would, I would suggest that we include that portion of Clayton Road as well for that same. same cart route.
I think that could be.
It's just really hard for me to see, so I'm struggling a little bit, but that's what I'm, that's what I'm looking at. And then the other thing is, I guess, just a general comment, you know, Clayton receives a lot of traffic, or, you know, vehicle traffic that comes from East County, from, I guess, from, not specifically Brentwood only, but that direction. And, you know, I don't see how any communication or, you know, sharing of information could ever mitigate that unless we actually throttle traffic in some way. I would say that, you know, the, if you haven't driven this road, but I live on this road, and so every morning, and, you know, every morning when you go out there, I mean, I could wait 10 minutes to even be able to turn onto the street because of the volume of traffic that's coming by. It's designated as 45 miles an hour, but that's not realistic, I think, in terms of the actual speed that's traveled. You know, I think people try to drag race me on the way home, when the two lane becomes one lane, and it's, it's, it's a crazy busy street. So, you know, in certain times of the day, it'll be completely empty, and it's, it's fine, but during commute hours on, during the week, from 7:00 AM to 8:30, and then on the way home, from 3:30 to maybe 5:30 or 6:00 going the other way, I mean, it's bumper to bumper going 50 miles an hour, it's crazy. So, I, I don't see how, is there a way that something, okay, so let me rephrase it in a more positive way, is there a way that adopting something like this could limit that traffic? Because none of those people are using.
If I could jump in and say, there's not, as I already said to the Vice Mayor, there are no specific projects anticipated at this time, but the designation of this as a route of regional significance does bring it to a level of concern for the subregion and for CCTA as a whole, that might make a project like that more feasible from a funding and implementation perspective. It sort of puts a foot in the door, so to speak, where the City of Clayton could go back to Transpac and to CCTA and say, "Look, this is a route of regional significance that's been identified for potential safety improvements. We do have a problem here with speeding, with high volumes of traffic. It's very difficult for residents who live along this road to be able to access the facility, and are there improvements that we can make to try and lessen those impacts and make the road more usable for local traffic?" And because it's designated as a route of regional significance, those, such a project might be more fundable as a regional project and not simply as a local project. So, again, I don't want to portray it as though there is a project proposed, there's not such a project, but I think, you know, I heard Larry talk earlier about Pine Hollow Road and looking for a grant application up to $10 million to do improvements there. If you had a similar project for Marsh Creek Road, the fact that this is designated as a route of regional significance, and that the region has agreed to that and has stated that it's on that list because of safety improvements, all of those might make it more possible to look for grant funding for that kind of project.
But I guess, yeah, okay, I get that, and I appreciate that. Yeah, the type of project that I would want, I think, is the opposite of the type of project that you would want. I mean, I want less cars, and I want to make it harder for cars to come through, less traffic. I want the road to be less navigable so that it's not an alternative to Highway 4. For East County, I want Highway 4 to be used and not Clayton Road, because that's not safe for our residents. And I don't, I don't see how this, does this in any way help that? Because I want to throttle traffic so that it's, it's a bad alternative from anyone from East County to come through town as a shortcut.
So let me just mention, the reason, I think the reason we put that language in there, the Clayton city limit, because beyond there is the Encorbert County, right? So, designating this as a regional route of significance, open that communication with the county, so whatever improvement the county proposes, or you want the county to do, then that, it enables better communication and collaboration. So, I don't know, I know, when we talked to county staff, they had no intention of making this road capacity increasing at all. That's why we specifically focused on the bicycle and safety aspects of things.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I.
Councilor One, I want to say.
Bike safety is great.
I don't know.
I was just gonna say, like, ultimately, a traffic light at the city limits that waits, that makes cars wait like five minutes, that would be what I want.
Then you can have the discussion with the county staff.
No, it'd be in the city.
Okay.
I don't need the county for that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely, but what impacts upstream or downstream? It could, you know, have some ramifications. So I think, again, the idea is working together, collaborating with your neighbors, and then with the, with the other subregions, too.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Council? Seeing none, we'll put up the public comment. I do see a hand for public comment. Thank you, Ed.
I know, Ed Miller, I know it's a late night, I'm not gonna make this longer, but while I had these gentlemen here, when I was at the last CCTA meeting as the representative for the Citizens Advisory Committee, I brought up with Matt Kelly, we were looking at the MTC map of, with the routes of regional significance for MTC. And Ignacio Valley, unlike this map that I just looked at here, was not marked as a route of regional significance, so I was just wondering if the two of you could describe the relationship between, when you're saying route of regional significance on this, on this map, for this organization, what relationship does that have to the, to the MTC one?
Thank you for the question. It has no, it's two separate documents, two separate concepts.
Yeah, and I would just add that, in all respect to the commentary, I do a lot of this work.
It's still public comment right now, thank you.
I'm not aware.
Are there any questions here in the audience? And Janet, do we have Indian or virtual Zoom land?
Mayor Cloven, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
If there are no more questions from the audience, or out in our virtual audience, we will close public comment and bring it back to discussion at the City Council. And Councilor One, you have a question.
Yeah, I forgot to mention, one thing that was at the beginning of the presentation had to do with Mr. J and the associated funds with that. Can you, I was hoping that you could speak to the connection between this designation and those funds. Is it, is there any connectivity there, or is it, well, that's my question. Is there any connectivity there? Do you jeopardize, if you don't do this, does anything happen to that and whatnot?
The only connectivity there is just, is part of the measure J, which includes the growth management program, and part of the growth management program includes the action plans and the CTP, so that's that whole process there, that's the connection. There's no funding ramification for Clayton at all.
Okay, thank you.
So, this designation as a route of regional significance has been on my radar for several months. It's not like it just came up, I'm aware of it. I know there's been conversations with the technical advisory committee on this issue, and I appreciate Larry representing on this, on that. When we finally spoke about it last month at our Transpac meeting, and we talked about the map that actually showed it being listed as a route of regional significance, I was very clear in my concern for that, and what that might mean for our residents. I have dealt with many an email from residents concerned about the Brentwood freeway that comes through in the morning, and the corresponding traffic speeds that come into Clayton unfettered through county roads as they enter Clayton at speeds exceeding 60, 70 miles an hour at times. So trying to take a turn, like Councilor One, onto Clayton Road, or Marsh Creek Road, during those transportation times, high commute times, is very, very difficult, and very dangerous, especially some of the blind curves. And it's pretty dang clear when you go out Marsh Creek, and you see all the crosses and wreaths, and dedication lines of people who have taken inadvertent attempts to pass others, there's lots of death out there. It's something that can't be expanded. Environmentally, from a standpoint of the proximity of the creeks and the topography, you can't expand it. You're not gonna be able to do it, and you don't have the money to do it, and the environmental issue is gonna be just crazy. So even trying to do it, bike and ped, is gonna be really challenging out there. It won't be next to the road, it'll be, have to be something different. I don't know what that's gonna look like. So getting back to the real question here, Councilor One and fellow councilmembers, is what advantages is there to being designated a route of regional significance? Quite frankly, it's not gonna change. The people from Brentwood are gonna come through regardless, and if it's not designated a route of regional significance, we have no say. We have no input, it's just gonna happen. Sure, we could try to put a signal in at the front of town, right by the pumpkin patch, say, "Sorry, you gotta stay there for five minutes." That, you know, what's this, that's a stop of Concord doing that to us, and Walnut Creek is doing that, did that, we're all part of a regional group of cities, and the cooperation between cities, trying to make things safe and efficient without increasing speeds, is part of what this whole Transpac and Trans Plan and CCTA, we're all trying to create an efficient, safe transportation system. And that's part of the reason why I represent Clayton on Transpac. I am concerned that safety improvements may increase speed, but that's part of why we're at the table, is to have those conversations, is to try to prevent that type of additional stress on our, on our residents. I was clear last month, I'm clear now, I think I have a better vision, thank you for your presentation, of the control we would have as part, being a route of regional significance versus not. And I welcome additional input, any other conversation.
I don't, I don't think it actually adds any control. I mean, I do think that it adds potential visibility or discussion, but at the end of the day, as we clarified, there's no requirement that that even occurs, so on the potential upside, I think, is fairly limited. And when we talk about the limit of this notation on the map, I think it's great, but, you know, when, if we were to do something like this, then it's easy enough to change a map or the language of, the restrictive language here. And I think that just adds one more potential thing, that once you pull that away, then what do you have left? And I, I don't see a benefit to doing it, and I only see, there's no funding jeopardy, so that's off the table. And when I think of what's the benefit versus not, I don't see a lot. I mean, we talk about, like, throttling traffic, we know that, like, Walnut Creek already does this. I mean, if you try to go to North Gate during commute, I mean, that'll take you an hour. It's taken me over an hour to get there. I know you drive it more frequently, because you go, and perhaps I've been unlucky in my timing, but, you know, I'm not sure what value that adds, and it just seems like something that doesn't, it has only potential negatives, and I don't see a lot of potential positives. So, that's fine.
I respectfully disagree. I think the very value is that now that funding may be exist, may be available to make safety corrections as they are necessary, is something that's, we don't even have control of right now, and then not even have, designate that as such, we would lose that possibility of funding for to do those type of projects, so I think I disagree with that. And I think you're missing out on who we are as a region and what we are as Transpac, because it's not just us that's impacted, it's Concord and it's Walnut Creek as well, because they're getting all that traffic going through them as well. So, we're not on an island, we're working together to try to solve a problem for all of us, and I appreciate being a part of this and being able to be in that discussion. We were quite fortunate for many years to have our former leader in Julie Pierce, who was making sure that we were covered in all this, so I'm trying to fill her very large shoes quickly and get up to speed on where we are on some of these projects. And I was questioning this for a while, whether there's a value to it. I really appreciate the conversation, and I'm starting to see the value of it.
Yeah, I mean, like you said, there's, there's nothing we can do about the Brentwood traffic coming through, I mean, or, you know, from that direction, I think that's gonna happen regardless. But, you know, you speak of other cities and our involvement, you know, in the region, but I don't represent them. I represent the people of Clayton, and the people of Clayton are negatively impacted by, through traffic, and so, to the extent that we can limit it in any way, that helps the residents of Clayton. That's what I would do. I would always look out for the residents of Clayton, because that's who we represent.
And I concur, the people of Clayton are negatively impacted, but so are the people of Concord, and so the people of Walnut Creek, from the same traffic that's going through Clayton. And we have value in working together as a region to try to solve these issues, and not just try to be on an island. And having the same voices from those other Transpac representatives who have the same concerns from the same traffic coming through us on that road, it's, there's value as being a team working on those issues. Yes, Vice Mayor Tillman.
I'm just trying to understand how us opting in is negative. So if the traffic is already coming through currently, if it's my understanding, we do our own speed surveys in town, is that accurate? Do, are we, is that something we're able to do, right? So, if we're able to control the speed within town, and we know that people are already coming through, what is the negative impact from adopting this, from your point of view?
I think it's potential. Like I said, I think that the potential is primarily downside and not a lot of upside. So, whether there's specific identifiable things, like immediately, I don't, I don't think that's the case. I just think that as you do this designation, you're going to be called on to do more. And regarding speed studies, it's kind of, we do speed studies, so to speak, but we don't really have an effective speed study right now, because it's expired. But the way it works is, they'll measure speed that most vehicles travel. Greater throughput at higher speeds will necessitate higher speed limits. You can't go down. I mean, there's only, there's no way to ratchet down, it only goes one way. So, the more throughput we have, the more likely that you're going to have required, or not required is the wrong word, you're more likely to end up with higher speed limits, which I think is also bad. So, I don't think that there is specific negative impacts that are directly identifiable. I think that there are potential indirect negative impacts, and with no upside, I don't know why we would opt into something that doesn't have a defined benefit. But I'm, I'm more than comfortable disagreeing.
Oh, I know. I'm still trying to understand your point of view, though, just so I can be clear on where everybody lies. So if, so our speed surveys expired, do you recall at all, have you, is that something you guys have worked on, then?
Yes, it's been a, it's been a constant, I, we've had multiple conversations about the speed survey for three years, I think, it's been expired. I mean, I try not to talk about it too much, because I don't really want, there's some negative impacts of this, but I mean, it's, it's in the public domain, so it doesn't really matter.
And I guess I would suggest that perhaps, I mean, speed surveys is like a whole other meeting topic, so maybe at this point.
I get it, I'm just trying to understand the rationale for. I'm just trying to understand the rationale for the resistance or your desire to not agree on this or to disagree so that I can understand and help us all come to the same, it doesn't have to be consensus, but I'm just trying to understand your point of view. And so if the point is you think there's some negative connotation that may or may not exist, is that it? Because we would control it in town. It has nothing to do with what we're agreeing to right now. That's completely separate. The concern is that it's going to drive more traffic and possibly increase speeds, but that's what we would control. And they're saying there's nothing on the horizon to change anything that they're doing right now. There's no plan. There's no projects in place. So I'm just trying to understand where the hesitancy comes from. That's all.
Yeah. I mean, I think that, you know, the representative has said that there's no current project.
Sure.
I don't think that's always going to be the case. And there's a potential. And so I would say let's ward off any potential because we don't get anything from it. So why would you do it? We don't lose funding. We're not jeopardizing anything like that. So there's no downside to saying no. And there's a lot of downside, no, actually, let me rephrase. There's potentially downside to saying yes. So that's where I'd land.
One more question for the mayor. Do the representatives and even Councilmember Diaz, when you, I think you've served as the representative for this as well, so, and maybe all the mayors do. So can you guys tell me, is there, what are, from your point of view, the negative impacts of not doing this? Can you think of any? You've just voiced yours, but you can say it again if you want, but I'm curious to hear from...
Of not doing this?
Of not.
Of not participating?
Yeah. When I first heard about this several months ago, I was worried about the potential for significantly increased traffic. I think that that's the albatross that Councilmember One is talking about is that we're going to cause a lot more traffic in Clayton by calling it a route of regional significance. As a matter of fact, when I mentioned at last meeting that this was coming up, Tamara Steiner, who lives out Marsh Creek, her ears perked up and was just quite upset with the idea of that being done. What does that mean? What does that mean? What does that mean? So I think that this conversation tonight is appropriate. What does that mean? From a standpoint of looking at what they've designated on this map is it does not mean increased traffic. There is no desire to increase the volume. The volume's going to be exactly what it's going to be. What it does do is increase funding for safety on the road, meaning, I think you mentioned possibly a place where you can do a safe pass lane to pass slow traffic, you know, or turnout of some sort. That keeps funding for bike ped. It does allow for potential funding for additional safety measures for us if we need to want to apply for something to reduce potential speeds. It also includes the possibility of, again, us being involved, the whole regional conversation, whereas if we're not doing this, we're not in that conversation. And that's what I appreciate about it. I want to be at the table because I don't want to be on the menu.
But I don't think that it means, if we don't designate this, it's not like we still can't participate in a conversation. I mean, tell me if I'm wrong. If we don't designate this as a route and something happens and we say, "Hey, I have input," it's not going to be like, "Well, you didn't join this, so we're not listening to you." I don't think that would be the response, but you tell me.
I think I mentioned it earlier. If it's a, if you designate, if it's designated as a route of regional significance, so all the TransPAC and all the TransPlan cities, agency, including, then in Corporate County, gets to have the discussion and gets to have that collaboration and come up with solutions. If it's not designated as it is now, I mean, in Corporate County can do basically anything they want.
They can do that already, though.
Well, that's what, right now, if it's not designated, the county can do whatever they want. Right? Not that they're going to do any capacity increasing improvement, but being designated, it allows the communication and the agreement and the work to get, working together with the cities of Clayton. So that's the collaboration that would, that designating this route of regional significance would enable.
But at the end of the day, even if we were to designate it, as you said, the county can do whatever they want anyways.
No, but designated as a route of regional significance, now you have the TransPlan, which is your adjacent subregion, and the TransPAC. Now, there has to be agreement, there has to be discussion, there has to be resolution.
But didn't you say earlier that there's no requirement that they take action based on that?
For environmental, but for, per the action plan, that's the requirement, that is the cooperative collaboration, the spirit of the action plan is that what happens upstream will impact downstream, you know, like let's say if there's a big development going on in Brentwood, of course, you know, it may impact, you know, increased traffic or congestion. But now Clayton has a seat at the table to discuss that and to provide the input and to come up with a solution that everybody can agree upon. I guess I want to mention some, this is a side note, CCTA is looking at improving Highway Four. You know, we've worked on Highway Four for many years now and I'm leading an effort to look at a Highway Four vision study. We're going to kick off with a board approval tomorrow and we'll kick the project off. So we're constantly working to alleviate traffic from the local roads such as Marsh Creek Road. So that's in the, you know, that's always in the forefront of our focus.
Any other discussion from councilmembers?
Well, I always want a seat at the table. That's been my entire time that I've been on the council. If we don't have a seat at the table, then we're just, like you said, we're lunch. So I don't see any downside to this at all. In fact, you know, I got to say, on another tack, when it comes to the people from the East County coming here, I agree that we should slow them down and we should, in fact, get them to stop in our city. I think the problem with some of our business is the way we don't have such a thriving downtown is because we don't have a pass through and we have to become a destination city. And you have to come into Clayton and then go back out, you know? It'd be great if we did have some kind of a pass through that was reasonable. I would like to see improvement on Marsh Creek Road going out to the East County. I don't know that it's possible, but I would like to see that in order to bring business to our city. And so for this, this at least gives us the opportunity to listen and to make sure that somebody out in Brentwood doesn't make a decision that they're going to send more traffic down our way and we're not going to be able to do anything about it. And we won't know about it. That's what you were saying. We wouldn't even know about it until it was too late. But I think the solution here is to have a seat at the table and then try to figure out a way to slow that traffic down that is already coming in, the traffic that keeps Councilmember One from turning out of his house onto Marsh Creek Road. Get them to slow down, get them to come to our downtown and have lunch. So anyway, that's my opinion.
Any other comments from council? So what the direction is tonight is to discuss some feedback and get a full slate of information from you all that as your representative on TransPAC, that I get to bring it back to the next conversation at our next meeting. And I can guarantee you that I am very concerned about the volume and the speed and the challenges associated with traffic from, coming from Marsh Creek. It's been on my radar for quite a while and I was concerned about this designation. I appreciate you all coming and giving us additional information. It gives me a little more ammunition with regard to where we're going on this. Councilmember One, I do hear you very loud and clear and we may not necessarily agree with that, but I haven't heard from Councilmember Diaz on his thoughts on this. I would love to hear if you have any thoughts, Jim, just before, because it's, just because it'd be important what your thoughts are.
I have something to add at this time.
Thanks. I appreciate that. There is no vote on this item. I have heard all your comments and it's not an action items, but, and I will take it all to the next meeting on TransPAC. And I thank you all for presenting tonight and bringing this to us. And with that...
I would add just one more.
Sure, please.
I would obviously not choose, but you're going to represent what you feel is best. So to the extent that if you do make that recommendation or work towards that, then I would definitely want to change the language in this very tiny print on the map to reflect what we had talked about, to be more clear that it's within the city limits as well plus the area that is encompassed by Clayton Road. Or just say no altogether. That would, that would be my preferable option.
Thank you. Duly heard and as did the gentleman out there have also heard. With that, we will close item number nine C regarding the route of regional significance and move on to item number nine D, which is a minute order to request CMEX's, CMEX's, to provide a letter of support for their quarry reclamation plan amendment. And with that, I will bring that to you, Raina.
So, thank you. This item, for this item this evening, CMEX did not have anyone who was able to join us at the meeting this evening and so that they asked that we not take action on the item. They will go to their hearing with the county on September 28th. The city will not take a position prior to that time. And so there is no discussion about whether or not to support such a letter for this evening. You do have one lovely gentleman who, I, it's like I kind of wanted to tell you that we were going to do this, but then I thought you would want to have your opportunity to still be heard because public comment...
Did we know that we were going to, that you were going to pull this item?
Yes, but I didn't want to foreclose his opportunity to speak and be heard by the council because you still have the opportunity. They're not going to take an action, but they are happy to hear from you.
I mean, we could take action. It's on the agenda.
It is. I would recommend, and they have requested, that we not move forward without them to be here to answer questions, but I would encourage you to solicit public comment on this item.
Actually, are there any questions from city council first?
Maybe next time, let him know.
You know, I would like to hear, I would like, if you'd like to speak, please do because you have a captive audience right now with all five of us and now would be a great time for you to bring what you have, please.
Okay, once again.
He has three minutes.
No, no, I'm good. I only need a couple. Bill Burmeister again from Widmore Place in Clayton. I just wanted to make sure that we had ample time to see what CMEX is proposing. You know, we've been dealing with this, I've been living here for 30 years now, 28 years actually, but, and we've had many, you know, tough discussions with RMC Lone Star and now CMEX about the things that they'd like to do around their quarry and it affects us dramatically with the dust and stuff like that. So, you know, we have lots of concerns and we'd like to see what they're presenting and we haven't really had any notice about this until just yesterday. So again, since they aren't ready, that'd be fine. I'd like to see some more information from them before you guys make a decision and I'd like to be involved in that as well.
Can I ask a question if you don't mind? And this is kind of out of, not normal, but have you seen the reclamation plan, what the plan is in general?
We've seen some of it and I have not seen a lot. My wife is much more involved in that and she wasn't available tonight. And so we have seen some of it, but we, it's not very clear, some of their proposals and some of it sounds very good. I would agree with some of the things that they've suggested, but I don't have the details as far as that goes. I'm just concerned about them moving even closer to more, towards our house and our section, which there's a big open field there that they can move into and like, we would like to prevent that at all costs. But we don't want to hamper any of their efforts to improve their efficiency and to reduce the dust and, you know, keep the dust within their facility, which is what they're supposed to be doing. And I can attest that they are doing some sort of, not well enough as far as I'm concerned. And so again, the reclamation is one thing. It's also going to change their operation. They're combining two things at once and a couple of things within this, their proposal. So it's the reclamation, but they're also asking for, to change their operating agreement as well, sort of part of it, right? So those are our concerns.
I hope they get a chance to explain that to you personally. I know that Councilmember Diaz and I had a chance to sit down and actually hear their reclamation plan and I'm hoping they are able to in the next public hearing, whenever, get a chance to share that with you personally.
And the reclamation plan is so far away that it's really of no consequence to us at this point because it, 49 years.
And that's where, and that's what we're going to be talking about tonight, which is the reclamation plan. Thank you very much for your time.
One thing, though, the meeting at the county that is scheduled for the 28th, that's still going, so...
September 28th, yes.
So if you are, you know, that won't be here among this body, but that's going to be at the county. So if you have thoughts that you'd like to share, I would recommend that you do that at that body because that is the approving, well, it's the planning. So that is the body that will be actually making decisions around the reclamation plan.
Thank you. And with that, item number nine D is closed. We move to number, item number 10, which is closed...
Mayor Cloven, I do have a hand raised on the floor.
Ah, it is not closed.
Melinda, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Melinda, welcome. We can hear you.
Hi, my name is Melinda Moore and I'm a 57-year resident of Clayton. I want to verify, can you hear me one more time?
Yes, we can hear you, Melinda.
Okay, thank you. I just want to let you know that the residents have not been notified of the hearing on the 28th and I've been in contact with Inspector Avila about that. One neighbor did happen to get an email and shared it with us. And also that in 2020, before the environmental report came out, we had discussions with Julie Pierce and Tulia about our neighbors coming together with the city council and meeting at the library and discussing the reclamation plan together. We do have a lot of concerns about quarry operations and we haven't been able to have an opportunity to do that. We haven't even been notified of the hearing in writing. So I asked tonight that the city council write a letter to the Contra Costa County Planning Commission and ask them to postpone until we can have some residents' input and the city council support our concerns with a letter to the commission. I think that that was what the discussion was at the meeting in 2020 and I think the council should follow through with that. So I am disappointed with the road and the encroachment into the field. So, I am disappointed with the road and the encroachment into the field. No center dividers in the middle of the road, the dust, the blasting. When I moved here in 1965, the agreement was that the quarry was going to move on the Pine Hollow side and the Mitchell Canyon side, take down the mountain, level it and donate it to the state park. And a lot of things have changed. And I know we need the rock for our community and our streets and infrastructure. But I think the quarry could be a lot better neighbors. So, thank you very much for hearing me and have a good evening.
Thank you, Melinda. Appreciate your comments. Jen, are there any other public comments?
Mayor Cloven, I do not have any other hands raised on this item.
And since we are not taking any additional action on this, we will close item number nine D and take it to item number 10, which is closed session for which we have none. And we'll move on to item number 11, which is council items for request and directors for future meetings. And I see a hand raised to my left, Vice Mayor Tillman.
I just have one. So, subsequent to the conversation we had earlier about traffic coming in through, from East County through town and the desire to control that somewhat, I would like us to bring back and discuss the speed survey. I need to understand the history on all that and how we got to where we are, where that's expired, et cetera. So, that's my request. Because we can't do any changes unless we talk about it. So, let's talk about it.
I see a hand here to my...
Yes, yes, I do. I talked about a social interaction on social media earlier. A citizen by the name of Jim Gamble and I had a little kind of funny back and forth on social media. And he sparked an idea during the heat wave, during the hundred, many hundred-degree days that we had, of something that I talked to a former city manager about. And that is that we in Clayton are not self-sufficient when it comes to emergency preparedness. And that is, why would someone need to travel to a cooling center in Brentwood or Concord, especially given the age of our population and whatnot? That we are not self-sufficient in Clayton and that we should have our own cooling center, emergency center, where people know that that's where we need to go. So, anyway, I want to bring that back for a discussion at a later date.
Thank you very much. Any other items for future conversations, future meetings? Yes, Councilmember Juan.
I think, I mentioned earlier about talking with someone from Diamond Terrace. And I think that we had inquiry about some of the activity that was going on there, what with rate increases and the potential for, you know, circumventing some of the, rent control is the wrong word, some of the low housing, low-income housing requirements over there and circumventing that by raising fees. And I'd like to discuss what potential options we have as a city to help the residents there that may need our help. So, that's one. And then, I would like, I think Raina and I had talked about the city engineer doing a report out sometime in October regarding the acceptance of work for the pavement. So, I'd like to, within that report out, include more discussion about the scope of work and some of the areas around town where there's, there's been discussion about substandard work. So, and what our potential is for that as well.
Thank you. Any other items for future discussion? Is that a hand? With that, item number 11, future council items, is closed. And we're going to move to adjournment, but this meeting is going to be adjourned in the name of Dana Diaz, the beloved wife of our council member Jim Diaz. And at 10:34, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you.